All right, I'd like to call the Regular Board of Education meeting in order on Monday, January 27th, 2020. Please stand for the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a ready to be justice for all.
Roll call Kelly.
Mr. Betterfield?
Here.
Mr. Kaseleau?
Here.
Ms. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Kepstee?
Here.
Sadler?
Here.
Mr. Singh?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Fire exits, Matt?
Uh, exits are in the back of the LGI.
I'm gonna ask you to please rise again for a moment of silence for Andrew Minor, who served as a bus monitor in the Beacon City School District for over fifteen years. Thank you. All right, we switched left up in this agenda, so we opened it to the public first. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address us? Seeing none here, we're gonna move on to workshop number one, and that is we have the Beacon Assessor here, tax assessor, Kathy. So just to give you background as to why Kathy's here, I think it was back in November or early December, we received a letter from the Beacon City Council about historic properties. I know I'm not saying it the way that you said it prior to. So I'm gonna, and we had some questions. So Kathy's, Kathy, right?
Yes.
Kathy's gonna kinda give us a background and then answer any questions that we may have. Okay?
Hi. So the reason I'm here, like Mr. White said, is about the historic building exemption. I believe the city of Beacon reached out to the school district, asking them if they would consider offering the historic building exemption. As you know, we offer many exemptions, senior citizens, star veterans, but there is a historic building exemption that is on the books. The county doesn't offer it, so right now it's just the city offering it. So we felt that it would be more attractive to developers for people that are rehabilitating their buildings if maybe the school district would consider offering it as well. So the way that it works is the Architectural Review Board would have to approve any plans, so that would be the planning board in this case. And it would be for any altered or rehabilitated structures that fall within the historic district in the city. And so basically, most often we see it's like facades being fixed up, the public entryways perhaps, if they were historic in nature. And they would be, any increase of assessment due to the improvements to the property would be on a sliding scale. They would be 100% exempt for the first five years, and then it goes on a sliding scale from there, 80, 60, 40, 20, down to zero. So the original assessment of the structure would still be taxable. It would only be the attributable value to whatever the improvements would have added to the assessment that would qualify for the exemption. So it wouldn't be the whole property.
How many properties could qualify for this?
Oh, I don't know, but I would probably guess a couple of hundred, maybe.
What about missile buildings that were, well, buildings that were formerly owned by the city that might be sold to developers? Is that something that, like a historic building, like a firehouse or something?
That could perhaps qualify.
Okay.
Yeah, if it was deemed historic in nature, yes.
Okay.
And if the rehabilitation was to keep it in the period in which it was originally constructed.
Okay. But then the upgrades that would make the property more valuable, or say, turn it into a condo complex or something like that would be?
That wouldn't necessarily be exempt.
Okay.
Yeah. It would just be for the, anything to alter it or rehabilitate it, to get it back into its natural state, not so much like future development into other sources of living spaces. Yeah.
Does this primarily affect residential or commercial?
I, I have seen it affect residential, but most often it's commercial properties. Like I would think mostly on the Main Street corridor.
Is it possible to identify the buildings that it would apply to and send that information to us?
I, yes, I'm sure that we could do that.
It would be, just in terms of our role as a trustee, taxpayers?
Right.
It would be important for us to know if we're overlooking a?
Well, there's a historic overlay district, so that's, those properties, I'm sure the city could provide you with a list of those properties.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
So these are properties that are not landmarked but are considered historic by a local body?
Yeah, they would be, if they are in the historic overlay district, and they, depending on what year they were constructed.
So what is the year?
That is not determined by me. That would be more the planning board, or the Architectural Review Board.
So as time goes on, and this is, if this exemption is still on the books, that year can change?
Uh, I don't think so. I don't know that there's a year, like there's a specific year. It's whether or not it fits into the historic overlay district.
So it's the whole district, not buildings, not specific historic buildings?
Right.
So each owner has to sort of make a case of why their building should be considered historic?
Right. When they would go through the architectural review process, you know, they would have to demonstrate to that board how they were going to keep the building, how they were gonna bring it back to its original historic use.
If they, oh, sorry. If the, if the assessment increases, but they also, you know, did make it into, I don't know, more units or changed the use of it, I mean, how would you, how would you determine what part of that increased assessment is for the historic part and one part is because of the improvement?
Well, it would be valued based on, like, construction cost and in the, like, if it was a commercial building, it's basically for the exterior of the building and the public, the public, like vestibule, like public interior space. So if it was broken up into residential units, those would not qualify. So it would be up to me to determine, basically. How much of the cost was for each? Yeah.
Is the, is the primary motivation for this to maintain the aesthetics of Main Street or is it to attract developers?
Well, it's to maintain the aesthetics of the historical nature of the city of Beacon as a whole, but it's also to help owners of properties to defray some of the cost in making their properties nice and keeping them up, you know, to offset the expense that would be added by improving the property. It's really an incentive for people to fix their properties and keep them up nicely.
Isn't it also true and noteworthy that ordinary maintenance and repair of properties doesn't affect your tax system? I mean, if you do routine updating and repainting or something like that?
Painting doesn't. I guess, you know, that's a matter of opinion, who you ask. Generally, what it goes into an assessment, if it's a commercial property, we value them based on income and expense. So you were talking about breaking them up into condo units, they would be assessed, that would be assessed completely differently because we use income and expense to value those kind of properties. But this would be more the contributory value of the, you know, facade alterations that would probably be figured on a cost basis.
I'm still, I'm busy looking up, what's the working definition of historic? Just because you, just because you have a building on that overlay area, all those buildings are considered historic? Or, I assume there's some sort of value?
Well, they would have to be architecturally significant properties, and they would also have to, they would be subject to the regulations of the city's local landmarks ordinance.
And that's based on?
The city code.
Yeah, can you, can you recite it or no?
Well, I can't, no. I just do the tax exemptions and the valuation of the property.
Fair.
I'm sure someone else at the city would be happy to recite it.
Do you have an estimate? For you said around maybe 200 properties. Do you have a, an estimate for what the total assessed value that would be taken off the tax rolls would be for those properties?
I really don't, because, I mean, right now, I really only have maybe two properties in the little city of Beacon that get this exemption.
Okay.
Because with the ci, just the city offering it, it's really not that attractive. It's not that, they don't save us much money. If they were to save off of the city and the school, it would be much more attractive for building owners to maybe enter into this program. How much, that's hard to say.
Is this really a matter of taking something off the tax rolls? Is already there?
No, it's not. Because what's on the tax roll would stay on the tax roll. It would just be the additional value would be exempt on a sliding scale for 10 years, and then after that 10 years, that value would go on to the tax roll. So essentially, you're not losing anything, and you're incentivizing people to make the city beautiful and historic.
Is it an incentive for developers to restore? It sounds like it would be an incentive for developers to restore the properties to their original condition rather than modernize.
I think so. I think that's a fair statement.
Has there been any study done as to, you know, what the basis is? You said it was taxed exempt for five years and then, and then it's a sliding scale. Is there a basis for that schedule?
Well, it really goes back to New York State law property tax law. These kind of exemptions are done on a sliding scale, and that scale is set forth by the state, and we just mirror that.
One thing, just to follow up on Alyssa's question, there, if this only applies to the historic overlay district, anything that's done in that district is subject to an architectural review. So it's not like somebody is going to tear down, like, there's limitations on what they can do in that area based on building.
Right.
So it's, it's not in place of something modern being put up. It's, you know, and often things that go against the rules of that district get rejected.
I see.
So I understand that essentially it means that property is eligible, eligible if it's contributing to the kind of characteristics that led to the overlay district in the first place.
Yes.
So if it's a modern building, which is sometimes called an intrusion by people who work in this field, would count.
Right. And I think it would encourage people to keep the buildings historic in nature and not modernize them.
So I'm, again, apologize for my confusion, but I'm looking at 2018 zoning map for the city of Beacon, and there's something called a historic district and landmark overlay zone? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
So you're talking about not just Main Street, but Craig House property, the prison property, the property north of Tompkins Terrace, property east of Tompkins Terrace, those properties as well?
Anything in the historic overlay district. I mean, it's a historic city, so a lot of the city falls within that district.
Yes, but a lot of Main Street does not.
No?
No, according to this map.
I think the council is also looking at doing a building-by-building look at other freestanding things that are not in the district, that has a line around it, but that in and of themselves are historic and valued in some way. I'm not sure how far they've gone with that, but I know they were making a list.
Yeah, that's being worked on. It's my understanding now that historic overlay district and looking, like you said, on a case-to-case basis. So.
Do we, do we have the authority to make this kind of a decision?
Yeah.
It's similar to the veterans' tax relief that we voted on. So if we do the resolution, we would then send it to the city, and then the veterans would be able to do it. It's similar to that.
How?
So I understand the process to be, when we voted on a couple, what was it, four years ago? Four years ago, the veterans' tax?
The sliding scale for the veterans.
Right. So it would be similar to that.
Okay.
So, that's my analogy.
Right. You vote on the senior citizen scale that you want to offer, because the county offers one, the city offers one in the school district, so you would have the senior citizens, the veterans, disability, and you have business exemption.
Children, you know, we did the gold star children with the veterans.
How, how would we do that, though, if we also taxed Fishville?
It would only relay to Beacon.
It would only encompass the properties in the city of Beacon.
So we specify that?
The town of Fishville, they do the same that you do, or the Wabash School District.
I think we should, I think there's a lot of questions about what this looks like beyond what Kathy's?
Yeah, no, I, we needed a starting point.
Yeah, no, I think it's good. I think this brings up a lot of, like, I think we should look through the minutes and think about all the different questions that kind of risen because of this, because it's not, I don't think it's something that feels like a no-brainer.
Yeah, I, basically, I'm the person that administers the exemption.
Yes.
I'm not the person that decides whether or not a building goes into the overlay district or anything. The way it generally works is a taxpayer will come to me, they would have to reply within a year of receiving the CO of completion. So they would come to me by that next, next taxable status date. I would work up a valuation, and then apply the exemption on just the portion that was rehabilitated.
If it's a shareable public record, would it be possible to see an example of what that looks like and how the formula is adjusted?
Oh, sure, yes.
And then maybe an example of what it would look like if the school taxes were included and not?
Yeah.
Because it would just be more helpful to see a case study to understand what it looks like.
Yeah, I have a couple of properties, like I said, that did apply and received. One was a bed and breakfast, and the other, I believe, was a building on Main Street.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
I'm still, I'm still, I'm sorry, I'm just not super clear. I'm trying to understand, wrap my head around how we can give people an exemption but have it not be any loss for us?
Because the value that you would be exempting, you don't have right now. Like, it would be, like, so say there's a building and it's assessed at $200,000, and they're being taxed on an assessment of $200,000. So they're gonna do a project that's gonna increase the value by $50,000 to keep, and it meets all the criteria. So you would still be receiving the taxes off of $200,000, but the $50,000 that was gonna be added would be exempt for a period of time, but you would slowly start to get some of the benefit of that, and then in year 10, the whole thing would go.
So that, that is some, that is some loss for us that we would get.
No gain. It's not a gain.
It's not considered a loss, it's just that we, like, if you?
It's just a delayed gain.
The other question is whether or not they're gonna do that $50,000 of improvement or just let it rot.
Well, yeah, and that's really the, I think when this exemption was originally enacted, Beacon, you know, times were a little different.
Yeah.
And it was an incentive for people to maybe, but, you know, when it's only, when taxes are what they are, and it's only, and you're, you have county, city, and school, if only one of those entities is offering it, it's not as attractive for people.
Well, I like the, I like the incentive, the idea of incentive to reinvest in the structure and the facade and public areas.
Yes.
As, as keeping them historic instead of maybe just taking them down because they're rotting and putting up something maybe some more simple or more, or less. I do like that piece of it. I just have to consider the impact, you know, just understand what the impact is. Because I, from what I'm hearing is it would be an incentive for people to do those renovations where they might not do them.
Right.
Right now, they may not put the $50,000 in, because the taxes now is like, hey, I got this opportunity to spend the money. I'm really curious if this is, I don't know, I'm just curious if making initiatives about the historical facades of Main Street falls under the purview of?
Well, we're not, we don't have to, we can have the discussion later on. I just wanted to make sure that we had more information. This was a starting point, so I'm sure you sparked a lot of questions, as you could tell, and so we could take those questions and have a future discussion at another board meeting, so.
And, I mean, feel free to contact me if any individual has questions. My office is in City Hall.
You should give your last name, by the way.
Martin, M-A-R-T-I-N, Kathy Martin.
I have one more question. So are they, you mentioned two properties that are currently under the exemption?
Yes.
All right, so if we enact a law, we would also be giving those two properties an exemption?
I don't believe so.
Oh, it would be at the time, it would start?
It would start with any new applicants.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And, I mean, it might be useful for you to contact other municipalities and see if they'll offer this.
Right. Did, do we receive, do we ever receive, though, the wording of the exemption?
We received, we were, forwarded the resolution when the city passed it.
Right, we were, I think it was emailed, right?
Yeah.
Is there a way we can get, like, see it? I don't know, it doesn't matter if we?
I think seeing that, how it's applied is actually, because the wording, I don't think it's just the resolution, but it's how it's applied and what the law?
Right, I'd like to start with the wording and then?
We could, we have it. We, we can resend it. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of, oh, resolution. But before we do the resolution, I know Matt wanted to give a background. It's for the BBS.
Yeah, we, we've been in the process of selecting a new architecture firm for the last couple of months, and so we're excited to, to announce that we, we're gonna be moving forward with BBS Architecture, and the team is here. Just wanted to briefly talk about the process, then invite them down to talk a little bit. We, I think, had around 20 submissions from our RFP. We interviewed nine of the firms, we being me and Marie Anthony D'Amato, and then we did kind of like another round of interviews with some of the semifinalists, I guess, and then we did a, kind of a final round of interviews with the Board Facilities Committee, and we were really impressed with BBS, with kind of the clarity they brought to the work. We were really, it was really clear to us who we'd be working with. We were excited both about their thoughts about sustainability, their thoughts about design, and their thoughts about kind of like the nuts and bolts part of things, too. And we're really excited that you're here and, and that we're doing this tonight. So I thought you all could introduce yourselves to us, because I think we had five board members at that facilities meeting, so, and the folks who are watching the meeting, too, but we have board members who haven't met yet. So if you could introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about the firm, where your office is, and also maybe you can tell us, you know, some of the things that you feel you'll be bringing to Beacon as our new architect.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Landell. Thanks for having us here tonight. Board of Education, great to see you. It's our first of many, I hope, board meetings. We're very excited to be here. Thank you very much. I especially want to thank the selection committee, those of you who are on it, for having confidence in us. We really do appreciate it. And I didn't know there was 20 firms, so that's not bad. My name's Brian Manning. I run the Albany office for BBS. BBS is a large company of about 90 employees that specializes in K-12 architecture, and they have an office in Long Island and an office in Albany. The three of us founded the office in Albany two years ago. So it's a young office, but we're old guys. So we bring a lot of experience. All right, some of us are old. So we bring a lot of experience from a lot of different firms, some of them in that 20 that you saw, to the Albany office. And so we've been doing well for the last two years, building the office. We're up to 10 employees, and we're looking for more. So that's a little background on BBS. Now, today, so I'm running the Albany office, and I'm an architect. I have with me today Kevin Schaefer.
Kevin Schaefer, I'm an engineer, and I've got about 35 years of experience, and worked with these guys for about 15 years. So I'm really excited about the opportunity to, to help be a partner here and help lead the district and, as they develop their facilities going forward. I think what I bring is an open mind and looking at different concepts. I've seen and done a lot of different things, so I know what works, what doesn't work, and the pitfalls to avoid. I've done things like 288 bore geothermal system for a school out in Western New York, and down to a scale of where I have two boars in my front yard for geothermal. And I don't wanna say that it's just geothermal. It's a lot, I have radiant floors. I like to look at, what's the best technology to use where, and not, not being sold on any one thing. And I think, you know, my philosophy is to try to, you know, work, I mean, it's easy to make things hard, but, you know, I wanna work to make things simple, and I think that's important.
Hello, everybody. I'm Pasquale Marchese. Talking about clarity, I think I'm the wild card, because everybody during the photo interview was looking at me, what did he say? And I'm a project architect and a project manager with BBS. I will kind of be your main contact throughout the project, throughout the visitation through, to the school. Being an architect and project manager, I kind of bring the, the? Innovation of Kevin, design capability between Brian and I, and we try to put it together, try to satisfy your needs, talking and interviewing your staff, stakeholders, and make sure that any idea is being discussed and meets your needs. Like Kevin and Brian said, we, we are young as the office, but we have been working in the other firm, previous firm, for the last 12, 15 years. So you can see we are pretty good amalgamation out there. And we are getting ready and really looking forward to start working with you guys. And thank you for having us here today.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give the chance for the board, if you wanted to, we're done with interviewing, but if they had any, if they had any questions while you're here.
Yeah, no problem.
Questions?
Oh, here's one. You have, there's a large office in Long Island, right?
Yep.
So you have access to the specialists and someone there if they're needed to come up here for?
Correct, 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 yep.
You know, there's one thing with BBS is they have the engineering at house, you know, so a lot of, lot of different disciplines all under, under one roof.
Correct.
So they can, you know, easily work together. Makes it much more efficient. I think, talking about some of your other projects, the ability to take something boring like a roof replacement that we have to do and add in other design features for, you know, natural lighting and sustainability, and kind of blending those together, and that kind of idea was really, was really impressive. So look forward to working with them.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not on the committee, but I do look forward to seeing what your designs look like. You know, we do, I think, or in our small way, we've done the seating, the different seating options and stuff for the students, you know, trying to create an atmosphere for, for learning, you know, and we're also kind of need to prepare for what may come in the future.
Absolutely.
You know, Dr. Landell still has two more years, two and a half years left for the robotics lab, and, you know, so, stuff like that. So, you know?
Start, start working on that tonight.
We've played around with industrial arts, you know, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, but, you know, if, if there's a multi-use way of doing things, maybe it's something that we can, we can phase in and test and stuff like that. So welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pleasure.
One thing that was really meaningful, it's asking interviews, and this is something that I don't know if it was related to you, but in discussing how you presented around sustainability, that you had all incorporated some elements into your own homes.
Oh, okay.
Which is, it's easy to spend other people's money on things like that and do a big project, but it was really interesting to hear how it was a priority for you and how you had incorporated it in your own homes. And also, just frankly, that you seem to bring a lot of joy to the process. You seem to enjoy working together, and these projects and these hours of planning take a lot of time and meetings, and?
Yes.
So if we can have technical expertise, but also, you know, clearly some joy in the process, it would be very nice.
Yeah. It takes time, because, again, you know, you have to put your trust in us, and we have to build a relationship, like, you know, build a stairs for?
You're gonna put in stairs for you? Wait, wait, this guy, I'm very quid pro quo. It's all videotaped.
No. You know, it will take, it will take conversation, we take meetings, we have to understand how you operate, because, again, it's your school, there are stakeholders, there are staff, and they're working in this classroom, they're working in the office. So we have to understand. It will take time for us to understand, and then we develop some options. So we have to understand, it will take time for us to understand and then we develop some options. And they will be discussed with everybody to make sure that it's what you guys are looking at, meet your expectation, so.
I have a question for, I'm not sure who, no, maybe Matt or the committee or maybe the firm. Who is responsible for kind of integrating the board goals into the designs that they present?
Well, I think that that's in the process. That's part of the reason why we really liked their presentation as well, is that they had a large, there was a focus on stakeholder outreach and sort of bringing everybody's visions together, priorities, and then helping us to shape that into a project that would be meaningful to both the staff, the students, and the community. So, it's not, I don't think we explicitly discussed goals, other than there was a pretty strong public outreach element to their presentation.
Okay. No, thank you.
Starting out, though, it'll be on us to understand the board goals.
Yes.
Probably in talking with the superintendent and the principals and other people, they will come forth and we present everything to you. Nothing happens without you guys approving it.
Right.
We don't want to come in here not knowing what your goals are and not complying with them. That's not how we operate, so we're going to understand your goals and we'll be able to address them. Not only just comply with them, but when we can, we have an explanation of why, that we understood them, but here's, here's what we can do, kind of thing, so.
That would be great, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? Well, thank you so much for coming down, we do appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Forward to starting. Thank you.
Alright, I, I need a motion to approve resolution zero one two seven two zero A, which is approved amendment with BBS Architecture.
The correction, restate the resolution number?
Zero one two seven two zero A.
You're right, thank you. So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posted, motion carried, nine oh. Congratulations. Official. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review-
Oh, I was just skipping you guys. Trying to move along here, no. Alright, who wants to go first?
Hello, everybody. That's okay, I would have moved around, but Mike didn't offer me the portable clicker when I came in, so I guess, nah, I'm just kidding. Thanks for having me. It's been a really exciting year, I know I was only here about a month or two, you might reflect on the turf and how it's going so far, but it's been really nice. So, what I'd like to do for everybody is basically I'm going to take you through a few things that we've been doing so far this year, a couple of updates. We'll talk about some goals that we have in the future, where we currently are, some numbers, and then finally into the budget. So, starting out, last time I was here, we were talking about our Hall of Fame ceremony, went off great. We've been doing it in the gymnasium for basketball games. I feel like it's a little bit more intimate than being out in the middle of the field, all the hustle and bustle during homecoming. So it's a really nice ceremony that we've been having, you can see some noticeable faces in the pictures that we have here. But everything's been going really well and to have this many people abdected almost on a yearly basis, it's really special. It's a lot of reflection, accomplishments all in one year, or excuse me, all the career of our Beacon athletes. So it's a really nice thing and they'll forever have their Hall of Fame flags hanging around Athletic World. From there, I just wanted to go over a few elementary phys ed updates. So, we've been trying to really univertify the, what we've been doing in the elementary schools, from curriculum to just our practices altogether. So, one thing that we're going to do a little bit differently this year, we are going to have a joint fifth grade field day. It's going to be a little competition between all four of the elementary schools. We're going to have it here at Beacon High School, we thought that'd be something neat for our fifth graders about to move to the middle school level. And then various other things, such as swimming, walk to school days. We're trying to do more outdoor curriculum planning as we go through. And the nice thing about it, our staff is very willing to work with one another. And even schools such as South Avenue may not have all the outdoor spaces, other is able to be able to go outside and do some more outdoor activities. So we're always looking at some new things that we could do to get our kids outside. Another thing that we're going to be doing is our elementary phys ed teachers, we're talking about adding some more student choice for activities at sharp reservation this year. They want to try to look at some different things and offer for our students to try some different things, such as hiking, compared to doing a little bit of the norm. So they're going to be meeting with the elementary principals just to talk about what they want to see as well and bring to the table some things that they could offer. In addition to that, you'll see on the right side, also all the elementary schools have been going on field trips. Sergeant in particular took the trip down to MetLife Stadium again, Bear Mountain. And there's just a lot of really nice things going on, our teachers are adamant about really working together. And the good thing about this elementary group that we have, they're feeding off of each other. They're presenting ideas to one another. One big belief that I had, especially during curriculum days, is to be able to collaborate. If you have a good idea, a good program, I want to share it with everybody else. And going into the summer in particular, we're really going to try to get down to universe, universe bind the elementary curriculum as a whole.
What's the, what's the NBA virtual STEM trip thing under Sergeant?
So basically, it's a virtual field trip that can be held in the gym by using, you know, the electronics that we have available there. Mike Garibaldi brought that initiative into Sergeant. To be perfectly honest, I'm not exactly sure about it, he hasn't even done it yet, so I don't know the particulars, but certainly something I'm looking forward to seeing.
Just so you know, in the eighties, early nineties, there was the four elementary schools would converse for a field day, back in that early eighties and late nineties.
Which one did you go?
It was the early eighties.
And then some secondary PE updates that we have. We're still moving forward, our elective base phys ed for ten to twelve graders. The big ideas that we're trying to roll into this year are disc golf, becoming more popular, kayaking. We're still, you know, adamant about, you know, getting those guys into the pool. And then a game called ricochet ball. So we're, we're trying to take some things that our students are usually accustomed to playing. We find that we're getting more participation with that and it's going over really nice. In addition, some field trips, some new things we're going to be trying, the ninth grade is going to take a trip to Gravity, Gravity Vault to do some high element activities.
What's that?
And then, what's that?
Some climbing wall.
Hit the climbing wall, high elements, getting up with the ropes, it's just trying something. And part of our ninth grade curriculum is an alternative activities section, so we felt that that would fit nicely there. And then Barton Orchards has an outdoor course that you can go to as well, and financially it works out for us nicely. We're going to continue with our senior field day, we're excited about doing that, the date did change this year, but we're going to keep on with that. And just to give a reminder with that, it's basically broken down once again for the four elementary schools can make teams. They compete, it's a fun day, we're grilling outside, basically it's just a really enjoyable day. Whether you want to participate or not in phys ed activities, we just want everybody to be outside to have a good time. With the turf field, I'm really excited to have it on there this year, it's a nice area to have it. And then the ninth grade curriculum, we're going to move from having the hard copies onto the Chromebooks. We think that it's going to be a little bit easier to keep track of all the different lessons that we're doing in the ninth grade curriculum, which is focusing on the five components of health-related fitness. Moving to Roundabout Middle School, you'll see the field trips they've been doing, bowling, walkway over the Hudson. They've been coming up to Roundabout to swim, they did some last week while we had the regions going on. Taking a trip to West Point to watch some different events down there, and then to Mount Beacon as well. They were able to go on a hiking trip, which is really cool, utilizing our own resources here. In addition to that, they're starting to do phys ed student of the month, they're doing athlete student of the month. They participated in the walk to school day at the Roundabout level. I don't know if that's happened before, but they're trying to get on board with a lot of things that we're doing. And one thing that we're really looking at going into this year is really completing that project adventure portion that we've been adamant about talking about. And focusing on some collaborative, team-oriented activities, especially for our sixth grade students. It's just really important, coming from four schools, you're going to be in class with kids you may not know or have interacted before. So we're really looking at what's the best way for them to collaborate, learn to know each other, and so on and so forth.
Question on, well, I know, I think I was at Katie Bjordi, you have put together that, the girls introduction to, to, you know, different sports. Is that, is that going to happen again, or maybe it's, maybe it's outside of curriculum and all that?
Nope, it's going to happen actually in the slide, so we actually have the date. So September thirteenth, twenty twenty, we're going to do the second annual Girls in Sports Day. We're really excited about getting that going. This year, we have a young lady who had an unfortunate operation, which caused her to have an amputation at the time, who excelled as a collegiate athlete. So she will be the young lady giving our motivational talk during the lunchtime. So we're excited about that. Moving on, Diane Tansey, a lot of information here. Diane is, you know, came in really looking at project-oriented lessons, trying to get her students to be as hands-on as possible with the different things. And she's also great about bringing in community resources to talk to our students about the various issues that we've been having. So I don't want to go into every single detail here, but we do have it on the slide. But we're really proud of everything that she's doing. And going into next year, the goal is to have Roundabout start to transcend to this type of teaching as well. More different lessons that are hands-on, you know, that are utilizing the technology the right way.
Can you, can you tell us something about, I see the word human trafficking up there twice.
Yes.
Can you tell me about that?
So, the human trafficking, and I don't want to go into complete detail, because it's something that we're working on. But it's basically becoming more apparent that it's happening globally. And there are different groups that can make us aware of different signs of how this is happening to make students aware. Now, from here, I have some athletic information and more so participation rates. So what I've done for the last couple of years is I broke down the three different seasons that we have. I've listed the number of activities that we offer our students, and I've listed enrollments of both male and female enrollments for the different activities that we had. I tried to color code the red as being a decline and the green as being an incline. One really thing that we're proud of is we're seeing a more inclined of female participation in athletics. And actually, you'll see later that in the last three years, we've actually gained female participation in athletics. We did have a slight drop, as you'll see like in the fall, for boys. That's much in part to having a team, not enough enrolled for that team. Going into this year, I am looking forward, we are going to institute back one of our football teams, which should give us this like a male enrollment and get us back to where we need to be.
Quick question.
Sure.
Do these numbers reflect positions available on a team or actual students?
This is actual students.
So the number?
Yes.
So I see two hundred and seventy-six total girls.
Correct.
All of the girls are playing sports.
That's two hundred and seventy-six per the two seasons together.
Great.
Yep. And then on to the actual athletic budget. We did have minimal increases this year. First, in coaching athletic stipends, we increased two thousand dollars. That's the supplement for the unified sports that we're going to be doing. That's with our students with disabilities, are going to be participating in the basketball league this spring. Very excited to get that going. Athletic chaperones has stayed the same. Equipment has increased by fifteen thousand dollars, but that's because we reallocated money from the recreational equipment line to make it a little bit more broad to athletic equipment. Goal with that is to start to renovate our weight room that we have here at Beacon High School. We do have outdated equipment, so we're going to be in need of having some new things. Probably the first thing we'll be doing would be our dumbbell set, as an example. Contractual expenses, you can also see the increase from that. But what we did is we moved the reconditioning equipment line into contractual expenses. We were finding that it kind of fell under the same type of title, so we just simply reallocated it into it and gave it a broader range. Athletic supplies for all schools is still going to remain at fifty thousand dollars. And then PE supplies from all schools. What we did there is we were able to take the money that was coming from the specific school and put it under my umbrella in athletics. It makes it easier when you order the equipment, because each school building was given that money and we were taking it out to order phys ed supplies. Now it's just going to be simply under my title and I'm going to be able to purchase directly from my line.
So does that mean that we'll see essentially a reduction on each of the schools to offset this?
Uh, yes.
For PE supplies, yes.
For, right, for PE supplies.
For PE supplies, mhm.
And then the BOSI service, we just simply increased two thousand dollars just to keep up with our trends.
So the, the forty-five thousand for new equipment, that's, that's for weight, like weight equipment, as you said?
Yes, and now it could be spent in other areas as necessary. But that is the goal. The goal is to get our weight room up to par with the equipment that we have. We have, you know, nineteen, twenty-year-old equipment. I think we can all agree that there, there are some later renovations or later advancements in technology, so, you know, we need to get some of that for our athletes.
Can I ask what we got last year?
Thirty thousand.
For, what, what did that go towards?
Thirty thousand, was spent on various items, especially on the turf field. Can you read your report?
We did mat, pole vault mats as well.
Yep, fifteen thousand on pole vault mats, all of the batches that you see out in the turf field, those other small things, the goalpost pads, little things like that.
So it's not specific to the weight room, it's specific to all equipment for athletics?
Yes.
You were just giving a framework that you want to focus on the?
Yes.
But, I think at one time you spoke about changes to the weight room, to the, to the wrestling room, is that, that's still staying as is?
Uh, it's, it's under discussion right now. We're trying to find the, the best way to, you know, offer our facilities to meet the most needs of our students.
But it's not, it's not really looking at it in the twenty, twenty to twenty-one budget?
Well, we want to gradually start to increase. So for instance, a new dumbbell set, we have dumbbells that are twenty years old and they're kind of falling apart and are past the point where a regular screw isn't holding the weights in so far. That's a seven thousand dollar purchase. So that's an example of how we start out with that. The other are the actual racks that we're using, from the different bars that we're using. I mean, do things just get weird or worn over time? So just starting to piece that little by little.
Right, but you're not, like I said, there was, was a time you were looking at modifications to the wrestling area. That's not what you're talking about here, you're just talking about replacing out the equipment.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Any other questions?
Yeah, with the thirty thousand dollar increase in total, it sounded like ten was coming from other schools. Same with the others, or is it an increase of twenty?
Fifteen was coming from the recreation area, ten was coming from the building area. So the only increase was really coaching stipends of two and the BOSI services of two. Four.
But, um-
On the equipment line, the fifteen thousand is coming, there's a recreation equipment line?
Okay, so that's coming from there.
That's where it's coming from there.
Got it.
So, from there, some things that we are doing this year. On the left are various events that we've participated in. One in particular has been the perfect place for college recruitment presentation. A gentleman comes in, he was able to talk about the recruiting process for our student athletes who want to play at the collegiate level. Fitness Fun Night that we were just able to have last week was probably the highest attendance since I've been here. It's going really well, and the nice thing about that, our, our physical education staff in the Beacon School District has taken that and adopted that, and they did a wonderful job with our students, it was a really nice outing. We're going to be having a VHS Senior Athletics College Commitment Ceremony. That's for any student that's going to be playing at the Junior College Division Two, Three, One. We're going to have a nice ceremony in here one day. The date is there, I'll make sure that I put out a nice invitation for our students playing at the next level. And something a little bit different this year, we want to do a modified sports recognition, which will be at Roundabout Middle School, I'm thinking in terms of a ice cream party or something like that, so our coaches can give awards, certificates of participation. And the same thing with JV. I'd like to do that for our JV students and recognize them after school hours. And then from there, just another thing that we've continued to do, and it's been going quite well, is our preseason parent meetings. Since we've started, we've been offering a parent meeting that has the coaches of that current season in attendance. And basically, I do about a twenty-minute conversation just about the code of conduct, what we expect as student athletes, and then they have the opportunity to break out with the actual coach to go into specifics about the tryout. The coach talks about what they're looking for, athlete usually gives the schedule for the following season, go over his rules, and that gives the parents an opportunity to talk one-on-one with the coach about what they're expecting to see. So that's been going quite well, and it's definitely something that I'm going to continue to do in the future. A couple of other things, we're going to continue summer school PE credit. We had over twenty students able to retain their PE credit, or gain their PE credit, I should say, by participating in our last summer session last year, went excellent. Unified basketball, as I mentioned, it's going to be a wonderful season, I'm really excited about it. It's basically a six-game season that, and it's a four-thirty game in the VHS gym with our students with disabilities, you're going to be on the court and they're going to be playing in an actual regulated basketball game. So the goal is to promote that with all the current athletic programs. You try to have all the different teams attend and cheer on the students. The seniors are going to have a senior night, the seniors are going to get a banner on the wall. It's just something that we think is really going to be nice for Beacon. We have new backboards down at South Avenue in Roundabout. Doing some batting cage alterations on the baseball and softball field. Something that we've started this year, staff recognition ceremonies at our sporting events, just the other night modified- Just the other night, modified girls' basketball, did a staff recognition. So basically, every girl on the team invited one of their former staff members, our current staff members. A lot were from elementary schools that would come up and we recognize them for the game. It gets more people at our games and it makes our staff feel really nice. And then a few other things, one would be turf field, a flagpole going into this season. You know, we're going to do something a little bit nicer and a little bit bigger. Additional lighting around VHS after the night of events. And then, and Rombaut Middle School, if phys ed staff is going to be taking on a painting project to try to beautify that a little bit more. Yes?
I have a question. In our, you know, town sports and CYO sports, a lot of coaches uses, use the, the mobile apps to keep parents connected and to update team families, player families about schedule changes, et cetera. I noticed that in modified and high school sports, that doesn't seem to be the norm. And I wondered if there's any plan to use a tool like that because, especially for working parents whose kids are here at the schools for practices and then are stranded without a ride home. Since we don't have transportation, it would be helpful for parents of those kids to be able to connect with the other pa... I mean, I don't even know who the, most of the parents on my kids' sports teams. So I wondered, has, have any other parents come to you with questions about using an app like Team Snap or similar in the, in the school sports?
Nobody has talked to me about that, but that's not to say we can't explore something. In the school setting, it gets a little bit more touchy when you're working with the electronics and the communication. But I know there are some different avenues you can go through that are regulated nicely.
Yeah.
Nobody's mentioned anything about that, but that's certainly something we can look into and try to adopt an app or a way to do it.
I think that would be a great option, especially for the working parents. Like today, my daughter had modified basketball practice and was stuck without a ride. And she walked to Main Street and waited at the pizzeria until I could come and pick her up. So I, I've had that experience with my kids many times since they've been in modified sports. And if I can easily contact another parent who I may not even know, but to put out a message and say, hey, is any, is anyone available to drive my child home after practice? That would be, would be helpful. I mean, we use those apps pretty much every rec and CYO sport that we play, we use the apps and they're very helpful.
There we go. Something to look into.
I have a question, that kind of makes me think also, is this something we kick around sometimes thinking about? How does transportation affect a student's accessibility, ability to participate in after-school sports? Part of that, even just talking about it, is always this unknown of like, well, how many students? It's impossible to know how many students are deterred because they're not there. But certainly, there are a number of students who do participate, who wouldn't depend on a, on a bus otherwise, but they don't, so they must carpool. Do you have any sense of what percentage of students or any way to give us a sense of how big an issue that is?
I don't, but I can say in a former district that I worked in, it was an issue. I mean, Beacon, I do have the luxury of being pretty close proximity, we have a lot of students who walk. So that works for us, but in other schools, you have John Jay's Fishkill, where you're not next to housing. The, the transportation became more of an issue than so here. I'm not saying it's not an issue here because I think transportation would certainly help numbers all around. But I, I don't have an exact sense of how it would benefit us.
Have you ever done a survey about reasons for, reasons why students participate, right? Reasons why students don't participate in extracurricular and, and sports activities?
I have not specifically.
Along that same line though, are after-school sports, do they end at approximately the same time or are they, they vary?
They vary.
Yeah, they vary and, and different sports do different things. For instance, a, if you're looking at cheerleading, they try to end by 3:45 when the late bus is available at Rombaut Middle School. So that helps them there, but that's not to say that a basketball team is a practice until 5 o'clock and then the transportation could become an issue. That's definitely something to look into with the survey as well.
Can you say, can you speak about the PE curriculum? New York State's Physical Education Standards came out with a New York State Social Emotional Benchmark, the New York State Health Education Initiative. Doctor, we studied 2018. I know you, I saw Ms. Tan's, yeah, but I couldn't relate that table to the standards and initiatives. Can you speak more about that?
I, I know from talking to Diane, a lot has to do with that project-based education and also working with the different community entities to bring into it. That's just some things that we've talked specifically about. But as, when it comes to meeting the standards, we're always trying to revamp that curriculum to get on board with what we're doing. For instance, you'll see there's something that Mayapex is doing to offer more elective-based opportunities in health education classes. So that's an example that she found that we're going to explore in the future.
Is that something that I can ask for a better, for, for presentation on?
Sure.
Okay. Because, I mean, mental health was, we talked about mental health a couple of years back, I think. And it's, it's something that we are concerned about in the PE curriculum. As well as the sports, the athletes themselves.
So moving on, just a couple of things that we would like to do next year. The first is offering crew to our students here at Beacon. We're talking to another school district about how we can, you know, effectively make this work out and offer this opportunity. The goal would be to join up with another club, merge with that club, see how the enrollment's going, see if we can learn a thing or two. Then, you know, ultimately be able to take this on ourselves. From what I understand, it's a very expensive sport and hobby. However, that, you know, with us being so close to the river, I think it kind of makes sense. So that's something that we're going to explore and get into next year. We're almost all confirmed with that as well. Next, as I mentioned, is the Girls in Sports Day for 2020. Just continuing to encourage, encourage the participation of our female athletes. We had over 100 girls last year and we're looking to improve upon that number as well. And then secondary intramurals, so something I've been talking with Dr. Landel about is offering some more opportunities for our students. Not only our students who may be cut from a team, but our students who may not be ready to commit full-time into interscholastic athletics. We thought it would be a nice way to offer some opportunities after school, allow them to participate on a team, work on skills, and then hopefully transition into the actual interscholastic athletic field. So that's something we're trying to figure out. Gym space is a big one, but that's not to say we can't, you know, at least offer this to our students and see how it goes.
What age level do you imagine that starting?
Middles.
So then for sixth graders?
Intramurals technically, yes. Good.
Do you have sports in mind?
Yeah, I, I kind of wanted to tailor it off of the sports that we're cutting students from, which would be soccer in the fall, basketball in the winter, and then baseball, softball in the spring. I figured that'd be a nice model to start with.
Are we still prohibited to send, I guess, when students make it to state? We're still not doing that, right? Send it up to the state?
Those nationals.
National, I'm sorry, nationals?
Yes.
Correct.
States, they got it.
State, we send people.
Yes.
So state sends the national?
We send our athletes to states.
Yes.
It's the nationals piece.
I'm sorry, yeah, so the...
Talking about paying, right?
Yeah, we transport them to the state competitions, but we don't do anything for them if they want to go to the national competition. Okay. And that's still our position.
My understanding, in nationals, they represent themselves?
I, I, you know what, I don't know specifically.
I, I think that was the issue.
I think it's specific to track and field.
Okay.
And maybe, does swimming have nationals to make or?
Uh, they do. How often do students go to nationals?
We've had it. We've, we've been lucky to have some stellar athletes that have made it that far in the near past.
Like one a year or?
Oh, not that much. Maybe four a decade.
Okay. But they tend not to go, like, because there's no, they don't...
That's not...
No, they went.
They might need to go.
They do go.
Yeah.
They finance it themselves. Okay. I thought it was, I thought it was an equity issue. Okay.
Moving on, some three-year goals that we have in the department. One's going to be JV freshman modified assistant coaches, similar to the classroom model that we were able to do. The more coaches, the more hands we have working with our players, the more benefits we're seeing. The other is Crew Cup, as I mentioned, the marching band. Our, our new band teacher, James Walton, is doing a wonderful job. He was able to play at each of our football games this year. We're looking to expand that and, you know, I want to support him to be as successful as we can in that at Beacon. Paying, resourcing everything for in the district, possibly, but it's something that definitely needs to be updated as we go. The goal is to continue to do it school by school as we move forward. Trophy case updates, as small as that sounds, big project, especially when many of our trophies don't have actual names listed on them and trying to take them out and get them down to our trophy rep to get some things, our teams drawn up on them. And then competitive cheer, moving our cheerleaders into competitive fields, which is something I think just goes hand in hand with school spirit, to be honest. On the right, you'll see sixth grade project adventure, a half-year curriculum, as I mentioned before, at the middle school. The eighth grade, half-year, which is utilizing the high elements. We do have high elements that need to be inspected and, or, excuse me, that were inspected, that do need to be updated as they come. Part of the equipment line could fall into that piece. If that means we can get the kids climbing up on the ceiling, we're going to do it, force as safe as possible with the proper training. Secondary PE electives, continue to expand that. Looking at things such as offering weight training or aquatics and being a little bit more broad, but letting the students choose what they want to do. The elementary PE curriculum revision, as I mentioned, having all the four schools following one specific model. A permanent sub for PE teachers that can be utilized throughout the district. If one PE teacher goes out in the middle school, a lot of times it's a non-certified teacher moving into that realm. And we just wanted to be able to keep our kids moving and active as much as possible. And then finally, continuing to explore swimming K through eight on a more consistent basis, I should say, throughout the course of the school year.
Question on the, you have, excuse me, on the assistant coaches or just coaches in general?
Yep.
Are we providing any kind of, you know, proficiency, proficiency training to the coaches? Or assessing the coaches and their skill level, their own, their own skill level, so they can, when they give guidance and training, it's...
Yeah, certainly. You know, not only do they have to be certified as per the state, they receive assessment from my office on a seasonal basis. And usually, the discussion about where we're going with the program and different ways that we can connect with our students is held regularly.
Right. Okay.
Want to compliment you on the Crew Club idea and the idea of getting into the Hudson River. I think that there may be some additional ways over the longer term to build some support for that by reaching out to community-based organizations. Couple of people at this table could probably give you introductions. And there's also the City Rec Commission, as well as the Town of Fishkill Recreation Commission, since it's part of our districts and the town. So there's resources out there and maybe we can put them all together and see what comes of it. You're right, it is expensive, you've got to buy shells and ores and a place to keep them. But I wouldn't rule it out and I'd be happy to support it in any way that I can.
I appreciate that. I'm very limited with my crew knowledge, but it's certainly something that I think is important.
But the, at least initial vision is there's a boat, a boathouse up in Poughkeepsie that all of the high schools use. It's Spack and Kill that we're thinking of partnering with. Spack and Kill's has a strong program, but their numbers have, they kind of need another district to stabilize their numbers. So I think what makes it doable for us is we would be using their, I mean, this boathouse is a shared thing. I, I did a tour last, when was it, spring?
Yep.
And I know you did a tour of it too. And it's, it's, what's cool about it is it's like every, every high school student who's in this room, all these different high schools are all kind of practicing at the same time and working out at the same time. It'd be a little bit of a transportation challenge for us. If Ron were here, he probably would contest the phrase a little bit, but, because our students would be going up there, you know, on a daily basis, so that would be a challenge. But that will help get it started for us.
So just reflecting on some five-year goals that we've had, they should be familiar. I've shown them in previous presentations here. First being a weight room configuration, continue to explore the additional space, update the equipment that we have. As I've mentioned in the past, I'm a big believer about season-long training for our athletes, a season-long opportunity. We're going to develop successful programs, our coaches need to be where our kids more consistently. We have to have ample areas and equipment to train the proper way. Number two is every student that graduates from VHS will be offered CPR and first aid certification. I can proudly say by the end of this year, that half of the students at VHS will be offered these courses to receive their actual certification. Moving on, every student that graduates from VHS will have developed a personal fitness plan. This, we're going to look to implement into our ninth grade curriculum. It's the five components of health-related fitness. And basically, we're talking with the high school teachers about developing a final that forces, or I shouldn't say force, asks the student to reflect on themselves and where they are in each of those areas. For instance, if somebody wants to be a dancer compared to a football player, they're going to work out in different ways. They need different levels of flexibility, muscular strength, endurance, body composition, so on and so forth. So we want to tailor this final to what the student wants to achieve. Then from there, after they pass the ninth grade curriculum, the goal is for them to be able to utilize our weight training facilities to continue to develop the way that they would like to. And then finally, increasing enrollment to BCSD students into interscholastic activities. And I'm proud to say that our overall female enrollment has increased in the last three school years. And it's still the goal of ours to keep these numbers on the rise for both male and female activities.
Go ahead. Yeah, I know the PTAs, PTOs, they've been also funding equipment for the playgrounds and stuff like that. Are we, is there anything we need to do to help them?
When it comes down to the equipment for the elementary schools, a lot of time the phys ed teachers use some of the money that they're allocated to go into the, go into the recess areas, so on and so forth. But the PTOs have been a big help. We haven't discussed specifically any major projects that utilize the phys ed budget, but we're always open to listing.
I think that might also be considered more of a facilities budget item. Not that...
The, the, right, the installation of the playgrounds come from facilities.
Is it, okay.
Sorry.
No, no, no.
It's all right.
I do want to thank you for making slides for your three and five-year goals. We do appreciate that, Ray. It's very interesting.
No problem.
Yeah, I wanted to also, you know, commend you for having the three-year, five-year view, it's really, it's important. And I also really appreciate the breakdown of the, of the students. You know, even the pluses, of course, and the minuses as well, but really seeing the numbers of the participation and tracking. For, for increasing, I guess we'll also consider trying to see how to increase the male population as well.
Yep.
You know, maybe additional sports to see there's, you know, a couple more sports offered for the girls. So I'd like to see the increase in the girls, but the, the boys, we need to keep them active as well.
Now, the good thing, especially going into next year, we know that we're going to put back in JV football, JV girls' soccer, crew, and unified sports. So there's four additional activities that we're planning for next year already.
Good.
I know the community buzzes about the turf field this past fall, especially with the Friday night lights and stuff. Are the students buzzing about it as well?
Yes, very excited.
And some of the feedback that I've heard from the community members is that they like the, the field. They think it's great for the students and stuff, but they were looking to see, I get questions about the bleachers and stuff. And I know it's a facilities type of question, but like, are you working on like a vision as to how that will look? And like, because you can't see over to football players because the stands are on ground level, not like cammens where they're four feet up and permanent and stuff?
Yeah, the, the seating and layout of the field has probably been the number one, I don't want to say complaint, but concern brought to my attention throughout the course of the fall season. If you had a chance to attend, you'll see, I mean, we were packed in there pretty good. There are people that are three or four people deep that weren't able to see onto the actual field to see the game. So certainly something that's been brought to my attention a lot by the community. That's something that I'm working with Amory and I need to look at a grandstand project that hopefully that we can do in the near future. But, because that's certainly been a number one concern.
Well, in the, you know, in my communication about, you know, trying to draw attention to people coming to homecoming, for instance, I would say, like, I would kind of warn people, we have temporary bleachers right now. And people are really good about it, but we know... we have temporary bleachers right now and people are really good about it, but we know, we know we need to, you know, make some shifts with that. I think what we are thinking, Chris, and I'm looking at you, is discussing it at a future facilities meeting, possibly discussing it then at the facilities budget update. John, John's been obviously sharing the concerns, I get him too, but also talking with us about what he thinks would really help. So we'll try to flush that out with the board committee.
Didn't we have this decision, initially we had better, better seating was part of the original plan and then we decided to go with a lower quality seating.
Lights.
So that would have like...
We did lights instead.
We had better seating with the setup for lights without putting lights in, but ultimately we decided that we would invest in lights to get the most use out of the field when we first built it and that we would then plan to build seating into the budget.
Well, I thought, and I, I know we talked about actually putting seating this year before the fall, so that's why we were putting it up.
And that's what I remember too, was about talking about it and saying if there was any money left over in the capital projects from this year, that it would be done for that and stuff.
Right, so we'll take a look at that, but either way, it's got to be done for it to support the full sports.
Absolutely.
I just, I mean, I recall us having the discussion around the vote we had when we approved putting the lights in place of and opting for, and I think I remember specifically asking if that would put us on the hook for needing to get seating in the future.
But there was nothing in place of though, using the words in place of, there was nothing to say in place of.
We chose to put lighting in place of the more permanent seating. Am I wrong?
I don't remember in place of.
Well, the initial, initial plan had permanent seating, isn't it, right?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
It was, so when these plans get developed, it was, I don't think we imagined we were going to be able to afford ones. That was, that we were originally, when we designed the plan, we were going to put in the hardware so that we could put lights in in the future. Because in effect, we were trying to, I think originally the plan was that we were going to refurbish Hammond Field. And then when we decided that it was better to create a more complete campus out of, you know, behind BHS, then we kind of took the plans that had been developed for Hammond, basically created like a Hammond Field there, but then we knew lights were going to be part of it, we didn't think we were going to be able to necessarily include them. And then it wasn't really in place of, it was like, what was the priority for the, to get it up and running? And we really, in discussion with athletics, principals, committee, that it would be better to start, because we could extend the use. That was like, we could get more teams using the field. But I don't think it was like we would never have seating. It was like, the way we could answer the seating question for this time around was to use temporary seating and to get the most use out of the field the first year we had it in place. Especially because it was going to be going in in the fall and it would be getting darker early, then we would use, then we would put the lights in under the capital project.
Yeah, because we didn't, it's not like we purchased something cheaper in the meantime, right? Those, that seating was...
Well, those can be moved to, the, the whole point was that what we purchased can be refurbished.
Right, it's going to be used elsewhere.
Yeah.
Right, right, right.
Well, I just, I only bring it up to disappoint you here because this wasn't, this was not that long ago, that when we made that vote, I specifically asked if next capital project season, we're suddenly going to say that these temporary seating are no good and we're going to have to, to put in something new. I just, I feel like the turf field has been very expensive already, so it seems like there's a lot more, the turf field keeps coming up as future expenses, not that there's anything wrong with it, it's a great contribution to, to our school communities, but there are a lot of communities, I want to make sure we're paying attention to all of them in a balanced way.
All right, thank you so much, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Going to start talking about the technology of proposed budget for the upcoming school year. Our agenda tonight is going to focus on an organization overview. We're going to talk about our year review with a couple of facts and figures. Also going to speak about the hardware upgrades, cybersecurity, budget figures, budget graph, anticipated BOSE aid based on our spending, and we'll take questions at the end. So just want to remind everybody of what our department looks like. We're a small department that does a lot of work. We're comprised of myself, I have two network specialists. I just want to talk about the department as a whole. My team is very, very passionate for the work that they do. Our network specialists work hard every day with various data integrations of various programs throughout the district, as well as patching our servers and trying to keep us secure in an age of ever-growing cybersecurity threats. Our information services specialists are the people that typically respond to the day-to-day issues. They're our faces in most of our school buildings. As issues arise, they're responding very quickly and helping to repair the equipment that's used in classrooms. We have our audio/video technician who you get to see on a regular basis, a terrific employee, and he's really a utility player in the sense that he can do a lot more than just audiovisual work, that he's involved with linking in servers and some of the projects that we have going on. And our data coordinator, who works tirelessly to make sure that the data that we're reporting up to the state is accurate and reported in a timely manner. And the latest addition this past summer was our summer student interns, who really helped us prepare the equipment that is being used in our classrooms today. We had a tremendous amount of new equipment purchased last year to get the one-to-one Chromebook program off of the ground here at Beacon High School, and also installing new interactive boards in each rooms. And they were just wonderful to have and we're hoping that we can replicate that program again and have their assistance in the future. So if you look at our organization, our 2018, 2019 year review, we responded almost close to 5,000 tickets, 4,800. We broke down just kind of the tickets by building, and then there's some outliers there that are submitted by parents of facilities and transportation, food services, that we don't really categorize or conjudge, but it just kind of gives you an overview of all of the tickets that we've been responding to and the different buildings that we've been working in. And our district truly has, truly has a need for technological support, especially with the additions in the past few years of the equipment that we've put in place in all buildings. For this coming school year, for 2021, we're expecting some hardware upgrades. Our Dell Equilogic servers are coming end of life, so that's a pretty large expense. Our laptops for our teaching assistants are approaching five years old, so they're due to be replaced. We're looking to replace some older PCs in offices and the computer labs throughout the district. We're also trying to use E-Rate funding to install an internet fiber connection to the press box and install additional internet drops in all of the elementary buildings with the hope of being able to build out an IP phone system in all buildings down the road. We want to upgrade the LGI, the room that we're in right now. Most of the video recording and audiovisual equipment dates back to when the building was built. Some of it is non-functioning, others of it is just nearing its end of useful life, so we're working to do that. And we also want to enhance the Roundabout Middle School Disaster Recovery Site. And what that site is, is all of our data that is created here and stored here in our data center, the NOC upstairs, gets replicated over to the Roundabout site. In the event of a cybersecurity incident or an emergency, that is how we would end up pulling our data back out and, and running the district. So we want to make sure that that's really ready to go and running so that if we do suffer a cybersecurity incident, which they seem to be becoming more frequent, especially within our region, we can continue operations pretty seamlessly. Just an update on our Chromebook one-to-one, we mentioned this in the fall, we're one-to-one and to sustain the program, we're due to purchase 250 Chromebooks to replace some of the original Chromebooks that were started when we did card-based programs here before we became one-to-one.
I have a question.
Yes.
So the Roundabout Disaster Recovery?
Yes.
I mean, that's good we have that, is that part of like some sort of a continuing operation plan, COOP plan or something?
Yeah, so it's part of our disaster recovery plan, which we just updated this past school year, and we found some deficiencies, so we want to fill those deficiencies so that we are ready, prepared for a disaster. And a disaster consisting of loss of the network center, whether it's due to fire, cybersecurity incident, or some other event.
Was the Roundabout, does the recovery center, was that there before you came on?
It was, it's been there for a long time.
Okay, have you considered perhaps moving it, I mean, having the high school and Roundabout on the same street, if there was a disaster, may not, you may lose the COOP center as well as the main center, so...
We've taken that into consideration, and this was before I came, but the district does have off-site backups, we have cloud backups. So that was taken into consideration when, when the disaster recovery site, it looks like was picked and made. The district made the decision to have it locally replicated across the street as well as in the cloud.
Okay. So there's no, you don't feel that it doesn't need to move that, that recovery site?
I don't think so, not at this time.
To maybe like the district office or something like that?
Not at this time, no.
Thank you.
So cybersecurity, just to update the board, New York State Ed has reported that there's been over 15 cyber attacks since July. Throughout the state, there's been a couple in the news locally, pretty close to us, and the threats are evolving very quickly, they're increasing, and they're becoming more sophisticated. So we're, we as a district believe that we need to increase the spending to help protect the district against these evolving threats. So we're going to spend approximately 43 more percent more than last year on cybersecurity prevention and mitigation system, and that basically comes up, up to being about 9% of our total proposed operating budget. And this is really in, in regards to the threats that I've seen, that the surrounding districts have seen, just within the past few months, really since the summertime. And most of it is stemming from ransomware, but ransomware has the ability to take out a district, take their networks down for months at a time, what we've seen in neighboring districts. So we're trying to prevent that and mitigate that risk from happening.
Do we have a, we have a training program for personnel who have access to your system about what to recognize in emails and phishing and...
Yes.
And then, okay, so you do have that?
Yeah, so we've been communicating regularly to the staff through the technology newsletter, what to look for, the suspicious emails. Dr. Alon and I are working on implementing a phishing exercise for staff to do, and Mr. Wright and I have been discussing the upcoming professional development day in March on how to provide more cybersecurity opportunities to staff.
Does a phishing exercise include, I've seen some places do like a random, you know, they, they'll...
Yeah.
The test.
Exactly.
Or drill.
Yes, yes. It's a, it's basically a fake email and then it lets the user know that either you say we're successful and you didn't fall for the trick, or you did, and then it gives them a little bit of coaching on how to avoid that in the future.
In my company, if you fail the test, you have to take this little mini course and then you have to take a quiz.
Yeah, that's something that we're looking at, yep.
And then you're publicly shamed.
We don't, we don't publicly shame.
It works, I'm telling you.
Do those kinds of phishing emails and, and things like that, do they reach students? Like, do students ever get those in their...
They do have the potential to reach students in the high school who receive outside email.
To their BCSD email address?
Correct, yes. It has the potential. We typically see it more to staff because our staff information is more public, so we have a staff directory on our website, so those staff emails are, are public information and they're easily accessible, where we're not publishing our student rosters or email lists on the website. So we haven't seen as many going to, it's quite possible, it could go to students, but we don't typically see it going to students, it's more going to staff or, or information that's elsewhere, public email address.
Do you have...
I think you're about to ask the same question that I was. Do the students get any sort of training or information about how to recognize those kinds of scams?
Yeah, so some of that is happening in pockets at various buildings, so I've talked to our library media specialist and they're using Common Sense Media, which talks about some of those things. I just recently looked at a program, it's similar to the Safe Schools Program that we talked about in the fall, it does like sexual harassment and chemical spills training for our staff. They just came out with a segment for students, so we're working with them to get a demo of those units and looking at that as a possible solution to start educating students.
That's good.
So this, this budget for cybersecurity, it's going to go towards training, towards the shame test, or some version of it. What, what else would it go, go towards?
Detection and mitigation, so there's systems, software out there that can detect the threat as it comes in, in real time, isolate it, quarantine it before it's able to spread. The big threat with the cybersecurity attacks we're seeing recently is the lateral movement through the networks. And also part of this budget would also be like segmenting off certain systems that in the past didn't need to be segmented off, HVAC systems, security systems, segmenting them off so if something came into a system that we're not typically looking at or working with on a, every day, that if that system was affected, it wouldn't spread to other areas of the district network, our Wi-Fi network, our domain controller, etc.
Do you have a sense, I think what I was trying to parse out is, because it's a, it's a pretty big bump from last year in the cybersecurity.
Yeah.
What percentage of that is going to be a recurring cost? I meant in training, is it going to become a recurring cost or what's going to be a one-time kind of, we bought it and we've got it?
Yeah, I mean, most of it is going to end up being recurring because most of it is software, aside from maybe the HVAC segmentation work, which is setting up new VLAN, so once they're set, you don't typically have to touch them, but a lot of it is, is subscription-based software.
Is there a Plan B? It's pretty expensive.
Yeah, I mean, so Plan B is you take the risk and you hope you don't get hit, I think.
But it looks like your overall budget is going down, has gone down.
Yes, my overall budget is going down, yes.
Yeah.
So we're trying to work with our budget and keep it, you know, reasonable, but also addressing the threats as they evolve.
Is there any way to assess the, I mean, I don't know how, I'm sure this must be algorithms, figuring out the, the potential cost risk towards what cost damage an attack would...
So I mean, if we had a data breach that encompassed personally identifiable information, IBM states that that's about $148 a user, between what you have to spend on notification and things of that nature, so that, I mean, that's a number that I can give you per user. I mean, when you talk about how many users we have in the district, we have data for all of our students, we have historical data on past students, we have data that is personally identifiable for students, emergency contacts and parents, so we have a large amount of data that could be exposed in a true incident.
Do you have a, off the top of your head, a sense of what that number is?
I would say about 40,000.
40,000 people?
Yes.
Or counts.
I mean, the, the data center's been in place for about 20 years and that's when the district moved the powers.
And I mean, says 131?
I think it's about $148, if you, if you Google it, you can think about...
Well, plus the, plus the fact that their data would be compromised.
Right.
Well, also, I think it's also about operational costs of your network goes offline and you're unable to use it.
Correct, that's what, that's what a lot of other districts have seen in recent months, is that their networks have been offline, so when we say network, no internet, no computers either, for months at a time, or at least up to two months in neighboring districts with these types of attacks.
So there are two local districts that had an attack, Chester and Midwoodbury, right? So they're probably going to be talking about the hardships that they had because doesn't the RIC cut them off? Once they are attacked, they're no longer, so they can't use their student system management, they have to go basically paint pencil and all that stuff, and that's been for several months, correct, in Chester's case, I believe?
So MidHudsonRIC has informed the district that if you suffer an attack, they're cutting off your access to the MidHudsonRIC, so their services and support. What that encompasses for us is we envision the, the finance management system, you can't do anything here in the district in order to access that or use that, you have to go up to the MidHudsonRIC every single time, which would be a huge inconvenience for multiple departments and individuals throughout the district, because anything that needs to be purchased ultimately has to go through there, as well as the payroll has to be done through there. So that's just one, one of the software programs that we use. There's others that we subscribe through the RIC that would be impacted as well, so it's, it's a large, not just an inconvenience, but we have to look at, like I think Kirsten said, lost time, and like our, the impact on our students, if we have no network, the Chromebook initiatives that we've done come to, they grind to a halt. Our teachers can't even use laptops in their classrooms. In a way, you're taking a large step back to a decade or two where we didn't have computers and wide computer access.
When I looked at your presentation though, I mean, you have, and I know that that cost does go up significantly.
Yes.
You've created a really impressive amount of efficiency.
I tried.
And so, could you speak to like how you made those decisions and...
I will when I get to the budget side of it. I think that's next, so we can jump right into that. So if you look at our hardware purchases, we've nearly cut them almost in half. We're trying to run more things through the BOSEs. We've thought in past years, if we can run purchases through BOSEs, whether hardware or software, we can generate a significant amount of state aid. So that's part of... So that's part of the way that we're able to fill some of the budget gaps where we're increasing areas is generating more state aid on our purchases. When we talk about contractual expenses and E-rate, so E-rate's a federal program that's administered, and they allocate a certain amount of money to each of the school buildings, and that money has to be used for technology within those school buildings. One of the things we purchased with E-rate is our fiber connection from county council. That's our internet service provider. So that's the internet for the whole district. We get a special rate and a government rate on that, and it's subsidized through the E-rate program. This year, we're looking to use the remaining funding, which expires at the end of this year, to put additional data drops in almost, in all of our buildings in order to build out in the future an IP phone system, a truly IP phone system that doesn't rely on copper cabling, which is becoming more and more obsolete. So those are some of the ways that we can generate the savings that you're seeing. So contractual expenses look really big this year because we're gonna do the cabling project, and the E-rate funding is expiring this year. It has to be used or you just lose it. So we're trying, we're trying to use it all right now. So that's about a three hundred thousand dollar increase when you look at contractual expenses. And then if we look at the servers that need to be replaced, that's another a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase that we're looking at. So just to kind of put it in the ballpark. When we look at travel and professional development, last year we were doing some training on some of these systems that we had in place, security prevention systems that the team wasn't totally familiar with, so that came off. We, we did those training. So that's decreasing. But the travel and professional development allows the department to stay, go to conferences, stay relevant on both instructional technology enhancements that are happening, that we wanna get to know more about, and that we may want to incorporate here in our district, but also go to some of those security conferences. So the Nice Gate organization is a conference that we attend. We go to the Data Tag, data analysis technical something group conference that the data coordinator goes to. We go to Power School University each year to learn how to better utilize our, our student information system. We go to instructional technology meetings held at the Bosse's, the ITSEC meetings. We go to curriculum and information technology meetings also held at the Dutch County Bosse's, so that's the travel and professional development line. Supplies and materials decrease substantially because we're not purchasing a thousand Chromebook cases this year. So we had that, that was a big bump last year. It's came back to where it's typically been in the past. Computer software, we're constantly evaluating our use of various pieces of software and licenses. So in a combination of moving some of those software purchases to the Bosse's budget line, and also reducing licenses where we saw inefficiency, we're able to bring that number down. The phone system, we had our phone server upgraded last year, so that was the bump that you saw. Now it's settling back down into what it typically should look like from year to year. Bosse's services, it dropped because we didn't have to purchase a thousand Chromebooks again this year. So you, it's, you can see the decrease slightly there. Administrator and tech non-instructional are contractual salaries and benefits. And there we have the subtotal, you'll see a decrease. And then if we look at our E-rate reimbursements, we're anticipating, based on the spending in this proposed budget, a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar reimbursement rate. And then this year's Bosse's aid is estimated to be about seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. So that brings us to a budget of about one point seven million. And then on the next slide, I predicted future budgets. Of course, there's never any certainty, especially with the proposed tariffs that have been happening at the federal level. Some of our vendors have already said, depending on what the government does, there could be increases on technological products, especially the hardware that we purchase. So that could change in the future, but right now, we're looking at about a three percent increase for each of the upcoming years. And then just a bar graph to help people visualize it. So you'll see we do have a pretty good drop after our big push last year to get interactive boards and Chromebooks into every classroom. And the estimated Bosse's aid that we'll be able to generate through this proposed budget would be about six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars based on the services that we purchased through Bosse's. And that would be applied to next school year's budget, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Any questions?
I think in the governor's state aid runs, they're looking at combining Bosse's aid into foundation aid. Is that right?
I don't think it's Bosse's aid. I think it's the category aid, textbook, software, he, those are going. He's proposing to go into foundation aid, expense-driven aids.
The cybersecurity risk is six million dollars. Edit math.
Your, your thoughts on three or five-year goals?
My thoughts on three, well, I definitely think that for, for three and five-year goals, we need to continue to sustain the Chromebook program, so that'll continually be about two hundred and fifty Chromebooks a year to replace the older models, and then push what we have here at BHS down to our elementary schools. We also are gonna continually, with the five-year goals, look at the interactive boards. We have several that were here before I even got here, so they're gonna be coming end of life within that five-year period, so we're gonna have to be looking at a replacement. And of course, we're always looking at cutting-edge technologies. So we brought the Z space in, we did a workshop with you in the fall, virtual reality. One of the board members had mentioned trying to get students involved in coding virtual reality, so we're looking at some programs that allow that to happen, and ways that we can integrate that into our existing curriculum. So it's looking at technology, what's happening today, but also when we talk about five-year goals, where is technology gonna be in five years? And it moves so quick. So right now, the, the up-and-coming thing that I'm foreseeing, that we may be talking about more in five years, is esports. Esports is growing at an exponential rate. The word sport can be misleading, really, if you wanna just drum it down, it's playing video games. But for all those teachers that told their students, when I was growing up, stop playing video games at home, do your homework, you're never gonna make money doing it, you can make some big money now. That's not to say that everybody's making millions of dollars, but there are lots of particles in the press that there are teenagers going out and winning these esports tournaments for millions of dollars. It's a really great opportunity for students now to gain potential scholarships at universities. Maris College has an esports team, and I heard recently that they're gonna be offering a scholarship. College of St. Rose in Albany already offers a scholarship. So those are some of the things that we're gonna be looking at when we talk about five-year plan of how we can take some of these cutting-edge things that may be budding right now and bringing them into our district in the future.
I think that's like a curric, part of curriculum or like an extra curriculum?
So that's, that's a great conversation. So right now, schools are seeing it more as a club, and, but there is curriculum that's being written around esports. The curriculum that we're seeing is more at the collegial level, and they're looking at it as a curriculum that focuses not just on the gaming aspect, but the coding aspect, the marketing aspect, the running of the events.
I can imagine game design being a.
Yeah, exactly. So that's what the curriculums are starting to come out of the collegial level. And I think we're gonna start to see that come down via either New York State Ed or, or other organizations into the K through twelve arena. But that's something to keep your eye on.
When you, when you, just in terms of bringing in program for curriculum, is it something that your staff is going to conferences and seeing new initiatives and bringing them back to staff? Or do you have staff coming to you with ideas, and then you're finding ways to incorporate them?
It's a mixture of both. So our staff is very innovative, our faculty is innovative. They're finding tools all the time. They usually will run, run it off us through the ticket system, hey, I found this tool, Mike, can we come and meet with you and introduce it? So we have those conversations. It's a two-way street. We also go to conferences sometimes, like for me, for the esports. That was a large part of the Nice Gate conference, was really around esports. There's been, the Bosse's had a group down just recently to the Kate meeting. It was a group that is doing esport work in the capital region, and they're looking to expand, and they were talking about how schools are starting to introduce that. So it's a, it's a mixture of both.
So you eloquently talked about how fast technology can go, but what about the ethics that go with technology? Ethics seem to fall behind on that. I mean, are we also promoting ethical use of the electronics? Is that, is that included in the curriculum somehow, or can you?
Yeah, so I, like I said before, our teachers are using Common Sense Media, which absolutely talks about ethical use. It has cyberbullying, anti-bullying campaigns, and lessons that teachers can incorporate into their everyday lessons. I think when we talked about ethical technology use, it really should be embedded across all curriculum. So anytime that we pull out the Chromebooks or we're using a software program, we're always reminding our students of, of the proper and ethical use of, of using the internet, of using that resource. Also, of what is a good, a good source, or how to cite a good source and identify that. So I think that happens throughout all levels of the curriculum throughout the district.
You know, I wondered, this, I mean, I don't know if this is quite the right conversation to have, but just to put it out there, because I've kicked this around. Is, is there a way that we can communicate to parents best methods to secure their, their child's devices themselves that aren't owned by the school district, but their smartphones, tablets, that kind of thing? I know some of the information can be found on your own, but just known as a parent, it's not as easy as you would think, and a lot of people don't know it. Is there any kind of opportunity that we could have to extend that, maybe ethical use or parental blocks, that kind of thing, to, to pass on to parents?
Yeah, I mean, there's lots of general information. When we talk about blocks, everybody has different internet service providers and equipment at home, so that makes it a little bit harder to say, hey, just click this button or do this. But there's a lot of general information that you can give to start moving community members in the right direction, and then having them figure out the nuances of each of their own unique environments.
Are you familiar with IBM's P-Tech program?
Yes.
Are we sending students to that?
I don't believe that we are, no.
Can we?
That would be something I'd want to discuss with Mr. Wright. It'd be involving curriculum.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys set the bar high for the ones that follow.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
So clear.
All right, and now I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment issue of particular individuals.
So move, second.
How much questions? All those in favor? I oppose. Motion carried. No. All right, so reviewing the agenda, we do have an item that was added, that was fourteen point oh four L two, added to the set agenda. Location should read Sergeant. Moving on, we're gonna go to student and school presentations. Any?
I have a question about the agenda. Item thirteen is new business. It's not old business? Thirteen.
Well, James brought it up at the last board meeting, so it's new business to this meeting. Yes, we discussed it back in April of two thousand nineteen.
Yes.
But since he brought it up for a discussion, I put it on new business because it wasn't something that was discussed, and he brought it back up. I didn't go back to two thousand nineteen where, that was last year.
Was it last year? It was two thousand seventeen?
No.
I don't know if we took it, I don't know, did we vote on it last?
Um.
We had a discussion.
This school year hasn't been discussed.
So does that mean we can bring back all old items?
I'm hoping not.
Well, so, just to be clear, I wanted to talk, knowing how you in particular felt about other things that have been brought up and then brought up again, and we've talked about, you know, what is our practice? We have certain practice with policy. I wanted to respect that and ask what the board wanted to do with other issues. So that I, I am not, I don't really like the way this is worded in the agenda. I don't, this is more a discussion of the practice than the actual thing, in my mind, anyway.
So item thirteen's mislabeled if we're not discussing with the number of board members?
We're discussing a memo that I shared with the rest of the board based on what our previous, our attorneys previously provided.
That's still business?
You could, you wanna name it old business or?
No, what I'm saying is, is that the policy, we could bring up all the other memos as well, all the board, all the?
James wasn't on the board when we discussed it, and he asked for information, so I sent it to him. At the last board meeting, he asked that, that it be added to the agenda. I said, I'll look to see when we received a memo from our law firm. When I looked for it, I found it, and I sent it out to the whole entire board.
Yes.
Right? And so I wanted to be able to follow up with James to see if that was what he was looking for. So I put it on his new business because it wasn't discussed this school year, and he wasn't part of the discussion. It's, the discussion is basically gonna be, you've received a memo, and we'll go from there. If he wants to adjust anything on it, we could adjust it.
So it's limited?
Open.
See what goes?
Is there a reason why you want it to be, with what there was?
Well, I mean, I'm against the topic, but, and I also circulated to the board the, the New York State Board, School Board Association's data on all types of board sizes and their school populations, and, and there is no definitive subject, but I'll wait till the topic comes up. Yeah, I'll wait till the topic comes up.
All right, student and school presentations. Seeing none, we're gonna go to parent groups. Seeing none, we're gonna go to superintendent's report.
All right, tonight for superintendent's report, I'm just going to update about what the diversity committee has been up to. The past few months, we meet on the third Thursday every month at seven forty-five at the Community Room in Beacon High School. The first meeting, we, we've had good attendance at all meetings. The first meeting, we kinda did a lot of sharing, talked about people's concerns, and we ended up forming three working groups. These groups are, and they're facilitated by one of us on the team. Bill Rolan is facilitating the Hiring and Diverse Staff Working Group. Eric has been facilitating a working group that's focused on implementation of the Code of Conduct, and also the Dignity Framework work that we've been doing. I've been facilitating, I've been facilitating a group that's focused on creating more inclusive environments for students with special needs, and also LGBTQ students. So just quick update, Bill has been getting a lot of great feedback from his group. He's kind of putting together a stronger plan. Some of the actions that are coming out are training for interview committees that, you know, really helps people sort of check their biases in the interview process, and also being more active participant in regional job fairs. And so you already have a plan to be sending administrators to, to, that are coming up, so we're excited about that. Eric has been getting some feedback from his group on a school connectedness survey that's going to go to third grade, third grade all the way through twelfth? Still working on that. The elementary level, we're not quite sure, it could be fourth and fifth. But all middle school students, all high school students, it's a really basic survey, but it asks students to talk about their connectedness both to each other and to adults in the building. The surveys have come out of our work from this Dignity Framework training that we've been doing. Our next one is on Monday of next week, so we're excited about that. They've also been reviewing Code of Conduct. And at the last meeting, some of the high school administrators were there and kinda talked about what some of the shifts in the Code of Conduct have looked like at the high school. My group, we've talked about some things that would help us be more inclusive for students with special needs. We've talked about the need for possibly some either different kinds of staffing or additional staffing in next year's budget, which is something that we're exploring through the budget process. We've also talked about training. We had a group of administrators attending a Leadership Inclusivity Workshop at Orange Elster Bosse's a couple of weeks ago called Inclusion is More Than Just a Percentage. They gave the workshop high reviews, and so they'll be, our goal is to bring the people who facilitate that workshop back to work with all of our administrators, either before this year ends or this summer, to start kind of getting all of our administrators on the same page with that. And then I updated the group also on, we've put together an initial PD plan with Glisten, our Hudson Valley Glisten, that they'll do kind of an intro for our elementary faculties and our secondary, our Rambaugh and our Beacon High School faculties, called LGBTQ Student One Oh One. It essentially gives educators kind of an overview of what LGBTQ students face today and, and the best practices in supporting them. It's a slightly different message for the elementary educators than it is the secondary, and they're kind of tailoring it to meet the needs of both of those groups, and so we're excited about that. So Anthony, I merged the two. That's my superintendent report tonight. But big thanks to all the people that have been coming. We've been trying to make these meetings really productive and action-oriented, and, you know, each month we're recording more and getting more feedback, so it's been a great process. Thank you.
Any questions for that? All right, we're gonna move, we're gonna move on to the Policy Committee.
Yes, we have our next meeting, next week, we from today, from seven to nine o'clock. We have a lot to cover. We're gonna get as much done as we can. I'm assuming that time still works for everyone? Great. I have no other comments.
Any questions for James?
We're still, you, we still have to put comments in this week, so we're ready for next week, right?
That's right. So.
Do you wanna make it that high for us?
Well, we have to. We haven't gotten all the policies yet, so Kelly, do you know when we can get all the policies that we'll be looking at the next meeting?
We're gonna work on it this week.
Okay, so.
Get them before the weekend.
Right, so before the weekend, as soon as we have that.
Right, so before the weekend, as soon as we have that, B I D.
Have you written the curriculum ones we didn't get to last week?
Last one?
All right, so maybe...
So we have those.
Yeah, those.
Sorry, you said we're to submit comments?
Yeah, because we wanted to try to make the, we're trying to make the committee a little, time a little shorter.
Right.
To try to have the questions ahead, so that maybe perhaps...
We're to send those questions and comments to you, James?
No, we should send to the whole committee so that Matt can forward anything to Legal if we need to.
Okay.
Cause Legal could probably answer those questions a lot faster than us, but then be, you know, is it, is it more efficient to have them on the phone as opposed to just sending the questions and have them answered?
Okay.
So, I just wanted to, you know, to thank the committee for, on policy forty-eight twenty-one, for having a markup copy of the changes, that was extremely helpful, so I really appreciate you listening, you know, and doing that for us.
All right. Congratulations, Craig.
Yes, the season of advocacy has arrived with the governor having delivered his budget and he's looking at making state aid for schools a bit, but looking at their state aid run for Beacon, at this rate, we're looking at an increase in his proposed estimated budget. Those are proposals and estimated, so it ain't over yet, but it looks like a four point one two percent increase in overall state aid. So, we don't seem to have been hit too badly by overall stresses in the governor's budget, so we'll see how it comes out. But in the broader run, by the way, that number equates to about one point two million dollars, so it's not chicken feet. In the broader run, though, the advocacy is still at issue here because the State School Boards Association provides a rundown on positions and summarizes a couple of interesting points. The executive proposal is about half, less than half of NISBA's education funding request of two point one billion. NISBA is calling for a dramatic increase in school aid over the executive's proposal, so that call goes to the legislature and is, what usually happens in these things is the legislature adds back some of them. So we'll see how that goes, but this is a year when they have a big budget deficit to cope with. There are a number of other changes, they want to combine some of the fixed, or the, some of the costs into the foundation aid instead of, if you look at the runs, there's like all these different categories, you lost to combine a few things. The, one thing I noticed in this report was there is a consideration for a building aid adjustment, and I don't understand the details of this, but it, it looks like they might come up with a different tier that would affect some districts with a lower degree of reimbursement rate. I would hope that we would look at that and figure out whether that might affect us or not. I couldn't really say, but I didn't raise my eyebrow. So, I know that Meredith is planning to go to a event in Albany, right, on the ninth, and we're trying to decide, should we have a meeting before that or after that to get started on our advocacy positions. So I'd ask Meredith maybe to try and get to some point what that session looks like.
This is my first time going to the Capitol Conference, so I actually am not totally sure...
What they do.
What it's gonna be like. I'm told it's really, I mean, there's a, there's an opportunity on Monday to actually try to meet with legislators, I wasn't planning to do that necessarily, but yeah, just to sort of hear, because there are a lot of nuances to the proposals, I feel like the aid consolidation thing is, is, seems like a sneaky, you know, way to try to lessen the power of foundation aid and building aid, or, and the aids at the same time, so, so yeah, I was hoping to just understand at a deeper level the proposals. That was, so I was recommending that we meet after, but if you, I mean, if, if there's more than you know than what you've just said, then you can meet, but I think if you, I know what you know, I wrote that same thing today, so I don't know if we need to meet beforehand.
Okay.
But that's just my...
Probably, probably try to schedule one for shortly after we come back.
Right after, that sounds good to me.
Yeah, so that's, that's basically it for now, thanks.
Okay. Any questions for Craig? Flora?
Yeah, the next wellness committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February fifth, at four o'clock. I think we're meeting in the library this time, correct? Okay, so we're meeting in the library at Beacon High School and there will be childcare and I'm not sure if this is on the agenda, but I know we are gearing up to start assessing the wellness policy, so I think that's the next big thing on the horizon for us. And I've heard a rumor that there will be someone exciting doing a presentation this time around as well, so, so yeah, that's all I have.
All right. Melissa?
I have a question and a comment. Two meetings ago, I think Anthony, you sent out the link, an email with a link to the super eval. The email that you sent, I don't think there was actually a link that I could find. And I tried to log in and I couldn't remember anything, so could we get the actual link sent back out again? I imagine I might be the last person who didn't do that.
No, you were not, I had not.
Okay.
I tried to be Kristen, but I went and found the link, wasn't there either.
Yeah. So I'm the only... It's pretty much, so if we could just get that, that link out, it'd be great.
You're a step ahead of me, I didn't realize there wasn't a link there.
Oh, okay. My comment was, I was happy to read about our graduation rates in the Highlands Current, that was really encouraging and something that I had actually been wondering about, but I was also struck by the disparity between boys graduating and girls graduating and I wondered if anyone had any, is there any attribution to why that is or any data or any reason why so many more girls graduate than boys?
Do you remember what that discrepancy is?
If I can, if I can find it quickly.
While you're looking it up, I noticed that we were seen to be doing pretty well across all the categories that were mentioned, but then it said almost all categories, I've been wondering, is there one where we didn't have an increase? And they break it up into different ethnic groups and special needs and stuff.
I'm not sure about that. I don't really have, Melissa, a straight reason for that.
The article states ten percent, a ten percent differential between boys and girls, I just wonder what's the reason?
I don't have one.
Any questions? Mike?
No comments tonight.
Anthony?
Good evening, I thank you, Matt, for coming, diversity committee, me and I unfortunately could not make it to the work. I do want to communicate a more sentimental message to the, to the people in Puerto Rico suffering from the earthquakes that they keep having and hopefully there's a light at the end of the tongue at that. Thank you. Oh, I have a question. The smart, the smart application, what's the status of it?
It's being processed and put on the portal.
Okay, you wanna send it to Julie Schorsh? Or do you want a board member to do that?
For Jonathan.
For Jonathan Jacobson?
I'm not, I don't understand your question. I mean, we have to vote it to the portal so that it gets submitted, did you want me to send a copy to her as well?
Yes, or if you feel more comfortable, you know, I can do that.
No, I mean, I don't mind doing it, I just didn't realize that was part of the process.
Is it because you want Jonathan to advocate for it?
Yes, the last year, last time we did this, we tried to get Frank to advocate for our application and I spoke to, when I spoke to Julie, she was open to doing that.
So I think the board has to take action and do, come to consensus to do it, right? Not just one board member can do it.
I, so, as I recall, it was because it was stalled. That was like the big issue, is that it wasn't moving through or being evaluated and we had concerns about that, but I think Tetra Tech, our partner, is, has served greater facility with getting things through the process and that's part of the reason why we're working with them. So, maybe we should see how it goes and if it's going slower, if they report back to us that it's not proceeding like, you know, proceeding in the time they meant, or maybe we can ask Jonathan, we can make a decision to ask Jonathan to advocate, but I think that was, I think Frank was sort of our, one of our channels of last resort because it wasn't moving forward.
Okay. I gotta see, I gotta see Anthony's point, I think, my understanding is that most other school districts reach out to Jacobson's office a lot more than we do, maybe we could actually ask for...
From what I remember, we, I mean, for our previous director, we were getting reads that everybody was getting stalled and I think we reached out to Frank six months, maybe, from the time he submitted, so we were, we weren't that delayed, but we knew there was a delay anyway. So that, that was the timing we had with Frank, I mean, we could repeat that timing again, I guess.
Not to repeat it, I mean, I'm, I'm just explaining why I remember him being brought into the process and that while we, in facilities, when we met with Tetra Tech, we went to great detail to explain how they anticipate, I, I'm fine, we could take more action or whatever, I'm just saying that they explained that they know, they're, they have like alternate serial numbers ready to go if there's any like sort of time delay and the price changes that they can, like everything in and that it doesn't slow down our application and all that, it just seems like there's all these, all this gamesmanship that has to happen and that unless you understand how to do it, you're sort of at a disadvantage and I, so it's fine, we can, we can send him...
Montech, Anna's a new business item for the next board meeting, we could discuss how we wanna proceed with it.
If that's the pleasure of the board in this one.
Have a great fun with that.
Sounds good.
So, we, our next facilities meeting is scheduled for February twelfth, but in the interest of onboarding our new architecture and engineering firm, I wanted to see if there's any availability, it would only be within this week or next week, so maybe push the meeting up to earlier, would anybody have availability for that? It would be the, either sometime this week might be a little short notice for them or the week of the third through the seventh.
We could dial in next week.
Okay. What about February third through the seventh?
Uh, yeah, next week.
That's next week, oh my god.
Yeah, next week, we could dial in next week.
Okay, so Craig, you can do that.
Craig?
What day are you talking about?
I don't have a specific date, I actually have a very busy week at the end of next week, but I'd be willing to schedule this meeting just so that we get this, get them on board ahead of the next board meeting so we can have some questions answered when we meet in the Capitol.
So you're talking about like the week of the tenth?
Nope, the week, the week of the tenth, the next board meeting is the tenth, so it would be the week of the third through the seventh.
So the fifth would be best.
Three through seventh.
Yeah, well...
Yeah, I, I have, I have availabilities.
Okay. Do we have to have a quorum for it, Anthony, just as far as to start the meeting, because if I'm, I'm running late, like for around...
What night are you having it?
Well, they're saying the fifth is what, is what works for best.
I could do two, I could do the fourth or fifth.
The fourth, I think would be better for me, I have, I have, I'm going to be moderating remote interviews and they're in a different time zone, so I don't, and they're not all scheduled yet, but I can, I'll make something work, but if we do the fourth or fifth, that would probably be best for me. And, but if, if I have something scheduled, you know, in Colorado and it's five o'clock their time and I have the time here, then I need to be flexible for that, so we can have a meeting and I can come leave if that's an issue.
Yeah, I mean, it just, if there's not a quorum, it would just be a meeting, it wouldn't be a district committee meeting.
Okay. All right.
So no action could be taken until there's a quorum.
Okay, all right, so I'll, I'll make, I'll, I'll put in a thing that I, I'll block out that time on Tuesday or Wednesday, so that'll be available and then...
Do you know what one you're leaning towards? I'm just trying to figure out.
Which one, I mean, they said, Mike said Tuesday or Wednesday works for him, Craig said, does Tuesday or Wednesday work for you, Craig?
Yeah.
Okay, so Tuesday or Wednesday, so you could be the time breaker or whatever.
If I had to pick, I'd pick Wednesday.
Okay, that's fine, let's do Wednesday.
But you said that's not better for you?
No, it's, I, I'll just, this, this is just something that occurred to me, so I'll, I'll just make accommodations with work.
Okay. What time do we want to do that?
Seven o'clock.
Make it a little bit later? What does that matter?
Seven thirty?
Yeah.
I don't wanna go too late and we have the, we'll have the architects coming down from Albany, so I don't wanna push them too late.
What, I mean, do you think it would just be an hour because we could do the prall meeting after that if we start at, I don't know how long it'll take exactly.
How about the fifth?
Have to develop the agenda?
Uh, oh no, yeah, so we're talking about the week after, never mind. Are you okay? Cause there's another, wait.
There's, it's, there's this meeting scheduled on the calendar for the first...
On the twelfth?
Right, yeah, right after the board meeting, but that's, I'm just thinking to have some information before the next board meeting with our new firm.
Gotcha.
They wanna make it seven on the fifth?
Okay.
Any questions for Kristen? Meredith?
I was not able to attend the most recent curriculum committee meeting where they, we're looking at testing data as we proceed with trying to figure out, do some curriculum mapping. We had a good meeting before that talking about how, if we really look at what's happening at every grade, we can, we can look for, we can look for gaps, we can look for connections that we can deepen, and so that is the process that we are in right now. Did you make a plan for the next meeting, Eric? I didn't receive minutes, so...
For the next meeting, one of the things we have to begin doing is looking at some of the new course proposals, but then we also look to continue the conversation around sort of data that we're able to look at, and we saw like some recaps between subgroups, grades, et cetera.
Okay, so that's, that's all, during that meeting is February eighteenth.
Can school board?
That's the Capitol Conference is in place about this month.
Got it. Any questions for Meredith? I have no questions. All right, new business. James, you asked a question about board size, so...
Yeah. Thank you for, for having this discussion, I know it's something we, this board has discussed in the past, not since I've been here. This came to mind, to me, not necessarily as my own idea, but something that I've personally spoken with many of the members of this board and it's an idea that comes up a lot. I know in April, I think it came up briefly for discussion and was kind of more exploratory about what is the process. I saw the memo that came from our attorneys that detailed that process, which was very helpful. I personally think that it, it makes sense for the board to consider reducing the size. Nothing, nothing against any of us personally, but it seems like, I've spoken, we've had conversations, some of us have had conversations just about what would be more efficient, what would help accomplish what we need to accomplish here. It's a small city, you know, do we need the same number of board members as New York City? I've heard Mr. Singh's apprehensions about this and your objections to it and I understand and kind of, I think I, I understand where you're coming from, from an equity perspective about accessibility. I agree that a ward system, if legal, would be very interesting to consider, but it's not currently. I think a lot about the, in a, in a community like ours, when you have people who come here to volunteer our time and who represent a certain amount of people who are dedicated to service and I have no doubt that if this board were smaller, the people who are not on this board would go on to do service in other parts of our community. So I'm thinking about kind of what are the, the larger needs of our community and what's gonna best serve it. I don't think this is a hill I need to die on, but I... I don't think this is a hill I need to die on, but I'm interested in kind of maybe airing out some of our, some of the conversations that I've heard us talk about privately, maybe this was a forum to, to say it out loud and talk about it.
So before we get into that, I think we have a, a different discussion to have, which is how often can we bring up things that, that have been brought up? And I know the last time we really talked about it, you weren't on the board yet. But I think, um, in the interest of being fair, cause I know that there are subjects that, um, board members have brought up and then tried to bring up again. And I actually am someone who brought up the size of the board every year for several years. Um, but I, I want to be respectful for, you know, to the practice we have in other areas. So I think before we get into that, I think we do need to talk about, um, you know, is there a practice we want to have for certain subjects that sort of come to a vote, that's what's decided at that time? Does it need to lay for a while?
I'm just curious as a point of process. Would that be a discussion to finally attend to for next meeting?
So the point of, so let's just call, for Robert's rules, you cannot bring the same item up twice in the same meeting, right? So Robert's rules kind of addresses this piece. I think for practice of a board, and what Anthony was talking about prior to was we try not to bring up the item that was discussed recently in the same meeting. However, in Robert's rules of order, any board member can make a motion and they would need to get a second and they can add any item to the agenda at any point of the meeting. All right. So I don't want you to feel limited as trustees of the board. You can always ask for a motion to be added to, to the agenda by making a motion and getting a second and then having it be voted on. So any member of the board can ask and, and that would be the process to adding an item to the agenda. I was concerned about getting James the information about the last conversation. And I probably mistakenly put it on as a discussion item where we just discussed it. I didn't realize how recently we discussed it. Just because as Meredith said, it was discussed every year. We discussed, it seems like it was a yearly discussion because there was such division as to one way or the other, um, about it. So I, I think that's where I kind of got lost was, hey, this is our, about the time that we start talking about board size and we talked about it every year. But I think as a practice of this board, what Anthony was referring to, and I appreciate it, was trying not to bring up items that we discuss every year and, and make it a, a practice of always bringing up. And I, am I mischaracterizing that piece? But as a trustee, you can always make a motion and then you just need a second and then you can add it on to the agenda.
Should we, so is this a modification of, uh, what we described before that we were talking about a process to where a trustee could bring up in their board comment period, a request to discuss something at the next meeting, right?
We said that would be, so that was the common, um, ground that we were, that we were making our practice to work on.
So that's more of a practice as opposed to what actual Robert's rules, like a courtesy?
I mean, if, if, so just to say that in a board comment, if a person wants to bring something up for discussion in the next meeting, they make a motion to bring it up. That requires a second. That would make sense.
That, all I'm saying is you don't have to get the courtesy of asking for a discussion. You as a trustee can ask for a motion and say, I would like to make a motion to discuss board size. If someone's seconding it and then there was a vote to add it on to the agenda, it would, it could, it would be added on. The practice that we were trying to come up with is common rules as to how this board will operate. We said, let's make it a courtesy to say, and then we would add it to the agenda. And, and, and that was the, the framework that we were working on.
I guess I'm curious why we're having this conversation now than the one, rather than the one that's on the agenda.
I was just explaining the process as to, I, I mean, I put it on the agenda. So listen, I could tell you, I would be in favor of low, uh, a smaller board. And I don't need to debate it or discuss it. That's just my feeling. So if it was on a, on a vote, I would, that's how I vote. I don't need to discuss it.
Thank you. The, the process that Anthony was describing and that you're, you're reiterating, I think the disconnect is that we, while we said this is how we're going to get something on the, on the, on the agenda, we didn't mention what about if something had been on the agenda before?
Ever?
Yeah, pretty much.
It's, it's an old school board.
So.
This is not an old school board.
No, I mean, the school district.
Oh, no, not ever. No, I think that, I think that, yeah, that's not, I think it's within the recent history.
According to the, the members.
But, but I mean, this is, this is an item that has come up and has been discussed, um, sequentially, just like Meredith has said. Um, and if, if it's, if it's, if, if it's the boards, um, if the board wants to agree on, on, on the decorum where you just have to wait till the next school year to bring something up, then we can do that. But I have other things that I, that I would like to bring up then in previous board meetings. And I don't know if the board wants to have that discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that at a, at a minimum, like not more than once a year, because usually you're in the same, have the same board, if you've heard it already. It's like, we already talked about that, you know, understanding that there's change out, you know, there's voting of members every year. So there might be a different composition. So I would say that no more frequent, uh, you know, no more frequent than yearly because we would have already spoken once.
You know what, round card, Dave.
Put it on the calendar. We're going to talk about it.
Okay.
I think we have been doing it yearly, actually. That's why it comes up every year.
I definitely brought it up three years in a row.
Yeah.
That was your.
Did you ever vote on it?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
It lost three years in a row. And then we didn't vote on it last year for some, I think we just discussed what the process is, but I don't think we brought it to a vote. Is anyone else?
I think it was because of the process.
We didn't know the process.
Um, no.
No, it's because it had to be voted upon by the public and that by the time we brought it to discussion, it was too late to put it on the ballot. Put it on the ballot. And also it's like how many issues do you want to put it before? We were, we had, you know, an election and a budget and we, that will be every year. But it was like when, it didn't feel like we had enough time to like really put that discussion out in the public.
So this was, I mean, this was discussed while you were on the board, maybe?
With no.
Without vote, because, because it was.
I believe that conversation was brief and ended with, we don't know the process.
No.
No.
Cause we didn't have the memo from the.
No, we revisited it after we got the memo.
I think the discussion was that it wasn't the appropriate time to be discussing it.
Cause it was too late.
The thing was a bit.
Right.
I think because it was like a nonstarter every time prior to, we didn't even get to what the process would look like because there were some members who were quite adamant that it not be reduced. But, um, last year was the first time I think that we just kind of came to this place of, I think it would, I think there would need to be a lot of lead time with the public and really see how, because in order to put it to vote, I think we'd have to sort of find out from the public what the appetite would be for making a drastic change like that.
I mean, wouldn't they tell us at, at the ballot box?
Um, yeah, but I, it's not like we don't develop, e- everything that we put before the, um, public for vote, we have a lot of hearings and public discussion about. So, um, I think that because we, and we vote to adopt the budget and then that's what we put to vote. We vote to adopt the, um, resolutions that are added. So those things all have, go through like a pretty long process. And, um, I think that this would be something that we would have to start a process for, for. I don't think it's, we don't like just leave things to the voters. Like we often need a rationale.
Did you guys do that before? When you voted on it before, did you guys have discussion with the public?
We had just.
Several.
Yeah. Well, no, we had discussions amongst ourselves. There were no public. Obviously, anyone is welcome to come and make public comment about their feelings about it. I, I'm not exactly sure what the public outreach would look like other than directing people to the board discussion.
It would be a split vote, too.
What would be a split vote?
On this subject.
On the board or on the?
From, on this board, it would be a split vote.
That's, uh-huh. That's clear.
It would not be the board going out to the public, it's unified board.
Right. That's what I think.
The opposite.
Right. That's what, I think that's what stopped it in the past. It didn't feel like anything that we could, with any confidence put forward. So it just kind of stayed there.
It's funny. I feel like we're in an awkward, since I was here for the previous votes, I know you're saying it's, it's a split board, but I think because we haven't, because some of us have the discussion already, you don't want to get into it, which I totally respect for time, but also I have a sense of reading that we're.
I agree with, you know, the reasons that you said. I, I feel like there are people that have, um, said, well, I would be on the board, but you know, the meetings are too long or, you know, I've certainly noticed when there are fewer people, the meetings are a little bit shorter. It's, it's maybe a way to encourage someone to run, actually. Um, we are a small district. There's plenty of districts that have, um, you know, have fewer than we do. Some have five.
Yeah. Kipsey has five.
Kipsey has only five.
But I think that was like used as like a reason not to.
Yeah. I think, I think five is too few.
That was a big issue there.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, so that's, I mean, that's kind of something similar what James is saying and, and so what I did was I reached out to NISBA and I got data on board sizes, pupil enrollment and, uh, general, uh, their, their general fund, um, budget and created a chart. And there are, there are school districts that are smaller than we are that have nine member boards, too.
Yes. It came over the past. There wasn't.
Yeah. So, so I think, so I think there's a perception that it would work better, uh, with a smaller board, but I don't think that perception is based on data.
No, it's, I think it's.
Huh?
I think it's based on our personal experience.
Yeah. So, but the data doesn't, doesn't support that. Um, I also want to point out that we have four board committees. So that means four board members, 16 seats. Um, Anthony White has the unfortunate part of being the exesio member of all of them. So that leaves, uh, 12 more seats that have to be filled by nine board members. And then we have five district committees for one board member each, five seats to be filled by nine board members. Those are 17 seats by nine board members. How many, how many, uh, how many extra committees would you, meetings, yeah, would you want to go to with a smaller board?
Yeah. Do the math.
You want to make, I mean, if you, I mean, the argument about making the work lighter, light hands is better with more people.
But also too, with the committees, you can reduce the size of the committees if you have a smaller board, too. So you can have a three-member committee.
Still, I mean, we have, we have four board committees. When we have five district committees, there's a lot of, there's a lot of work. And that's just not in total of nine by itself.
What I've just noticed in my, my short time on this board is that, uh, we all have a bit of fatigue around even these kinds of discussions because they go for a very long time. And I, I think it's very rare that we have that and each of the nine members actually feels like they have the time and space to participate fully because the air is very filled up by having so many voices. I don't know. I wonder, um, having fewer voices in the room or fewer chefs in the kitchen would actually allow more space for each of them who should be able to participate.
So are, Greg, how many questions are we, are we, did we transition from talking about how often things can be brought up? Are we formally, are we formally in a discussion about this topic?
Yeah. It seems like that's it really going. Well, because it was on the agenda. It's, it was on the agenda for tonight. It was put on, Anthony was explaining why it ended up on the agenda. So we, I think we'll have to add the process discussion to the agenda for future meeting. So this, this horse came before the cart.
The fact is though, that Robert's rules is Robert's rules. And so what I was asking for was more of a, a courtesy than anything, you know.
So we're in a, so we're in a discussion about board size?
Board size. Mm-hmm.
Right? I mean, is that, is that the case?
Yeah, so.
So, I mean, I, I, I think that the, uh, that having nine members on the committee does provide a good, you know, range of, of thoughts, different thoughts and, and experiences and community connections that really enriches, I think, a lot of our conversation. It does take, it does take more time, but it hasn't been 2:00 AM for a long, long time.
Yeah, you missed it.
And I, yeah, I, I appreciate all the different, all the conversation and some, you know, the different viewpoints. It helps me see things, you know, in a different light as well. And I think with the nine members, it's, it's, I think, I think it works better that way.
I agree with that.
Aside from the number of committees, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I don't remember what I said to you privately. So I'm kind of in a panic of like, when I say you said one thing and then I said a different thing, I feel a little nervous about that conversation being entered. So.
We all change our minds. That's why I changed my mind on this.
I, I actually have no memory of like what. I know at one point I was very interested in it. I think Anthony is one of the people that played me based on data and, um, some valid concerns about representation.
The, the size of this board has not, um, helped with the diversity of representation.
No, I know that's true. I wasn't saying, I, I think that that, that is definitely working for sure.
Yeah. And, and my, my point at, at the time we discussed it last was instead of deliberating over the size of the board, we should deliberate over diversifying the board further.
Right.
Um, and that will be, I think, a discussion that I would like to have. But I have no ideas for it.
I don't, well, I mean, I think Meredith is trying for many years to, she's lobbied several people pretty hard, but it's, you know, there's a lot of reluctance to, to.
So I think courtesy has been out there. If anyone makes a motion to add to agenda so we can vote on it, then I'd, I'd be fine with it.
I would vote in favor of it, but I, I'm not going to make that motion myself. Anyone else would, I would support it.
By courtesy, I will not make that motion either.
All right. Anybody else? Good.
Okay. Consent agenda. Thank you. Thank you all for having me.
The use of consent agenda permits the board of education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which, uh, are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually, a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and the item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Anything on the consent agenda a board member like polled?
Opel 14.06. Is there numbers that go with that, Mike, or?
Uh, claims audit, uh, January 14th, 2020.
Anything else? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve consent agenda items 14.01 through 14.14 minus 14.06, uh, the attachment label of dated 1/14/20.
So moved.
Second.
Anthony, was that you?
Yes.
Comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried, nine on. Any motion for 14.06, one dated 1/14/20?
So moved.
Second.
So, okay, so I had a question on, uh, refer to it. It is in the, in the attachment. It's actually page three of four. There was three checks I had questions on, Emery. So the first one was, um, check number 33664. It says to the city of Beacon for almost $26,000.
Si, uh, that is our payment for, um, the sewer and the water to the city of Beacon for the school district.
So it's for the all buildings, the schools and administration building and all that? Okay. And that's for, for a month, right?
I think they do it last quarter. I don't believe it's monthly. I didn't look at that specifically.
Um, the next one was, uh, 33677. This, uh, global Montello.
That is who we buy a few oil for at the bus garage through a state contract.
Okay. For the bus garage. So that's, uh, oil, um, fuel oil for heating or for the buses?
For the buses.
For the buses, okay. And, uh, 33687, Monticello wood floors, 2,000?
So that, that was a payment. We had, um, several of the gym floors stripped and rewaxed over the summer. So that's a payment towards that.
So that's, that's stripping and waxing. So it's different. It's not what.
John was talking a little bit more about it. So there are some gym floors that actually have to be brought down to the base and then maybe redone a little bit more. But this is just more of a, um, a maintenance issue that we do in the summer. So we kind of rotated every, we, we switch off on the school. So this is several schools that we were able to do.
Okay.
You know, South Avenue was one of them.
All right. Good. Thank you. That's all I had.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That was a nice one. Any in motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
James, I'm giving it to, who, who did beat out over there?
Floor.
Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? I know. At 10:17.